This meeting. Today is Tuesday, October the first, two thousand twenty-four. It is six P. M., and we are in the community wing of City Hall. Before I announce the pledge, if there, if anyone needs a seat, please see the directors in the back. They'll find a comfortable place for you to be seated so that no one is standing. Very good. So with that, I would ask you to please join me in our pledge of allegiance. Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Our first order of business this evening will be the delivery of five.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Mayor Althan.
President.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
Very good. Our next order of business will be the announcement of five proclamations this evening, so please have patience. And each one of them is very, very important, especially to those that have come out to attend the proclamation this evening. So Councilman Clufus will lead off with the first three, and Councilwoman Pontieri will finish up with the remaining two.
Thank you, Mayor. This first proclamation is for the Disability Employment Awareness Month. So if we could please have the representatives for the Disability Employment Awareness Month, if you don't mind joining me up here, that'd be amazing. Totally. Sure. And actually, in addition, why don't we have everybody come up for the first number one and number two proclamations? That'd be great. That would be, hey, how are you? Welcome, everybody. How are you? Good to see you. Yep. And if we could just form a natural wave behind us, that'd be great. Yep. Yeah. Story of my life, right? Tall people in the back, less tall people in the front. Slide to your left. Two hops this time. Slide to your left. Little more slide. Room over there. Two steps to your left. Maybe three. One more step. Three with inflation. All right. Perfect. Exactly. Be seen. Okay, perfect. We ready? Excellent. Hey, thank you, guys, for all being here. Thank you for coming up here. Much appreciated. First of all, this is a proclamation, whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, Congress declared the month of October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month to recognize the contributions made by individuals with disabilities. And whereas a diverse workforce creates the opportunity for growth and helps toward building a stronger economy for our city. And whereas our residents with disabilities deserve the right to live independently, enjoy self-determination, and be treated equally in the workplace. And whereas the Able Trust, also known as the Florida Endowment Foundation for Vocational Rehabilitation, has worked with employers and community organizations throughout the state, including Flagler County School District, to enable thousands of Florida citizens with disabilities to enter the workforce. And whereas Florida's Division of Vocational Rehabilitation and Division of Blind Services within the Department of Education assist people with disabilities so they may become employed. Whereas Flagler Schools has seen an overwhelming impact on the lives of many of Florida citizens with disabilities by offering services, including job placement assistance, training, support services, and job coaching. And whereas the City of Palm Coast joins the rest of Florida in reorganizing or recognizing the contributions of the two-point-eight million Floridians with disabilities by celebrating October twenty twenty-four as Disability Employment Awareness Month. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that October twenty twenty-four be officially designated as Disability Employment Awareness Month, and call on all citizens of Palm Coast to celebrate the many contributions individuals with disabilities make in Florida to our nation and to the world. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, everyone. My name is April Snakras, and I'm the Transition Specialist. I am honestly overwhelmed right now with this crowd. Extremely happy, and I took some notes because I don't want to forget anything, how grateful I am to be here right now with everybody behind me. And thanks again for inviting us here and celebrating Disability Employment Awareness Month with us. October is always a joyous month for people with disabilities. It's a time to come together and celebrate not only our challenges, but our incredible abilities. We are so fortunate to be a part of a community like Flagler County, where people truly see us, give us opportunities, and support us every step of the way. I want to take a moment to recognize and take few individuals who made tonight possible. First person is Virginia. She is fantastic. She always remembers and includes us to this program. Without her, we might have missed it. Flagler County is changing and growing, and it is incredible to see this awareness expanding throughout our schools and entire Palm Coast community. I would like to extend a special thank you to Curtis Sabelos, the owner of InvisiCook. Curtis, you're here. Curtis has been a wonderful supporter of our Trail students from the very beginning. His team has hired several of our students, and we cannot thank him enough for his continuing support. So when Virginia reached out again, she asked me to bring some of students from the previous years. She gets, she said, can you please invite? I'm like, of course I can invite. We have several students who completed the program and has been employed and doing a great job in different places. But the one thing, one person popped into my head, several people popped into my head is Marcus Nunez. Marcus. So Marcus, Marcus comes closer to me. Marcus completed both our transition programs. He is a hardworking, determined perfectionist, stubborn, who's always willing to step out of his comfort zone. He never said no to any of our tasks or job sites that he went to. He said, I will try. Today, Marcus works at Advent Health, and every time I speak to his managers, they cannot stop praising his incredible work ethic and dedication. And I also have another person, and I think he should be here with us, Zach Mahoney. Zach came to last couple of his years when he was twenty years old. Zach has so many qualities. He makes the room shine. Everybody who sees him has to smile because he has that magnetism positivity in him. And he has been volunteering at Flagler Palm Coast Library. And he's a joy to have. He has been always a joy to have. I'm so glad to see him here tonight. I also want to recognize Erica Flores, the founder of Vincent Clubhouse, who's here with us. Erica and her team have made such an impact in our community through their activities, raising awareness and fostering inclusion. We are deeply grateful for their efforts. I have seen other students that came to our program, who completed the program. I am sorry if I missed. I see Lacy. I see Keaton. I saw Keaton earlier. All right, awesome. You're here. Thank you. And there is another person that I wanted to, and she just walked in. I was waiting for her. The other student that we had, her name is Anya Dykes. Anya, can you please? Thank you. Anya's journey was a little different from Marcus. She didn't enjoy every job. She tried. But once she found what she loved, she pursued with an unwavering passion. Nothing could stop her. Anya wanted to become a paraprofessional, and she studied hard to pass the parapro exam with flying colors. She scored so high, guys. She's now a paraprofessional. She is my coworker, and I, it gives me joy to see her in the hallways. Finally, I want to thank our incredible community, our leader, Dr. Holiday, our leaders, business owners, partners, for extending your hands and making inclusion a reality. Thanks to our schools and all of you, Flagler County is truly leading the way in creating opportunities and celebrating the abilities of every individual. Thank you so much.
Excuse me. Mayor, City Council, if we can indulge in just a few more moments, I'd like to thank the City Council graciously for honoring October as Disability Employment Awareness Month. I'm very excited to let you know, and please excuse my back, how significantly our special needs community has grown. This is amazing. Although we've progressed, there is still much more developing and advancing the community needs. I moved to Palm Coast in two thousand with my special daughter Amanda. We met many special needs people along the way in her education years. She's now thirty-two. I believe that our commitment to participating in Special Olympics and volunteering in the schools, we knew approximately eighty percent of the special needs population. Now I only know approximately twenty-five due to our growing special needs population. Before you today is a sampling of the Trails program from Flagler Schools. My special girl Amanda is an alumni of this program, and along with many of the nonprofit groups that have recently formed here in Flagler County, Vincent's Clubhouse, Cedar Bridge Foundation. Unfortunately, yes, you're invited, couldn't attend this evening. But all of these groups service our young children, our youth, the teens, and the adults of our community. The Trails program has placed many students in the local workforce, including companies like Flagler Schools, Advent Health, Publix, T. J. Maxx, Dunkin' Donuts, many local restaurants, a company InvisiCook, and many, many more. There are also volunteers for the Flagler CERT, which is Emergency Management for Flagler County, that assist and volunteer in our special needs, from our special needs community. Please know that the special needs services here in Flagler County are still so limited. I am only aware of three programs for adults after they age out of the school system, all of which offer different ranges of assistance. There are at least fifty special needs Flagler participants that I know who are either transported to St. Augustine or Daytona Beach for services, and these numbers will only continue to grow larger. So this proclamation is very welcomed and needed in Palm Coast to bring awareness to disability employment. I would also like to thank the Flagler Schools and their associates, all the workers who came out tonight, and our nonprofit groups to assist in bringing awareness to our great community. Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Want to get together for a photo?
Yes.
All right, let's do it. I'm a tall one, so where do I want to?
Do you want to plant yourself?
Yes.
Up front, because you're the. All right, are we ready? One, two, three. Think I got everybody.
Okay, following that proclamation, we do have a secondary proclamation that has some overlap here, so I think it's going to be one more second. Thank you, guys, for sticking with us. This proclamation has to do with Down Syndrome Awareness Month. And I'm going to read from the bigger font because my eyes aren't what they used to be. Whereas Down Syndrome is a genetic condition that affects approximately one in seven hundred babies born each year in the United States and throughout the world, leading to intellectual and developmental challenges, but also unique strengths, potential, and abilities. Whereas individuals with Down Syndrome possess a wide range of abilities, talents, and contributions, enriching our communities with their unique perspective and strengths. Whereas people with Down Syndrome can lead fulfilling lives, including attending school, pursuing higher education, engaging in meaningful employment, and participating in recreational activities just as their peers without disabilities. And whereas family caregivers and support networks play a crucial role in empowering individuals with Down Syndrome to reach their full potential, fostering inclusion, acceptance, and the opportunity to live as independent and self-determined and valued members of society. Whereas ongoing research and advancements in medical care and support services provide new opportunities for individuals with Down Syndrome to lead fulfilling, healthy, and independent lives deserving of dignity and respect. Whereas early intervention, inclusive education, quality health care, and community support have been shown to significantly enhance the quality of life for individuals with Down Syndrome, promoting their physical, intellectual, emotional, and social development. And whereas Cedar Bridge Foundation, through its commitment to building resources, inclusion, development, growth, and education, also known as the acronym BRIDGE, provides invaluable support and resources for individuals with Down Syndrome and their families, championing a holistic approach to empowerment and advocacy. And whereas the month of October is nationally recognized as Down Syndrome Awareness Month, a time dedicated to celebrating the abilities and achievements of individuals with Down Syndrome while also raising awareness about the challenges they face and the importance of advocating for their rights and opportunities. Whereas we, as a community, recognize the importance of raising awareness and advocating for individuals with Down Syndrome. We commit to promoting their rights, celebrating their abilities, and building a more inclusive world where all people, regardless of ability, are empowered to achieve their fullest potential. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that October twenty twenty-four be officially designated as Down Syndrome Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the abilities of individuals with Down Syndrome, foster a culture of inclusion, and advocate for a society where everyone has equal opportunities to thrive. Signed this first day of October twenty twenty-four, testified by Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and David Althan, Mayor, City of Palm Coast, Florida.
Good evening. I am Paula Wilburn. I am the founder and executive director of the Palm Coast Down Syndrome Association. We have many of our members here with us today, and we also have some individuals with Down Syndrome here this evening that I've never met. So, welcome. We do have at our enrichment center, which is housed in Palm Coast Praise. We have a Friday night social event every Friday from six to eight, except the first Friday of the month. So any of you who want to come out and join us for some fun, we have a lot of that. We live up to our name. I want to thank Cedar Bridge for inviting us to jump on board with their having the proclamation. They did that and then invited me, and I am so grateful. We used to have proclamations done with the city and the county almost every year, and you know, since the big pandemic, things have gotten a little bit lost, but we're still going strong, and we want to recognize those with Down Syndrome and remind you, or tell you if you didn't know, that they're more alike than different. I want to recognize a couple of our members who are in the workforce. I had them wear a little bit of their uniform tonight. My son Keaton, who is employed by Mezzaluna's Pizzeria. He works at Mezzaluna's in the European Village and absolutely loves it. And then we have Jason Rodriguez. And Jason, Jason works at the Outback, and if you ever go into the Outback and ask for Jason, he will come out and give you a hug, right, Jay? And the same with Keaton. They would love to do that. And I don't want to lift them up above any of our other members, but I just want you to recognize that these young people have so many abilities that you just never even knew or haven't tapped into. So we want to thank you for recognizing all of us tonight. We've actually been in existence since two thousand and three, when Keaton was three years old, and there's still a lot of our community that don't even know we exist, but we're here. And I just want to put a plug out there that we are having our nineteenth annual Buddy Walk coming up November second, and it will be at Central Park, right here. We would love to have all of you come out and join us for the fun that we will have that day in recognizing, bringing awareness to our community, and raising our annual budget that we use to provide the resources that we do. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for recognizing us tonight, and thank you, Maria and Terri, for including us. Thank you so much.
For time's sake, I am not going to say much other than thank you, everyone, for showing up. This is absolutely amazing. Terri and I started Cedar Bridge Foundation because of our two daughters, my daughter Haley, who has A. S. D., Autism Spectrum Disorder, and I know Terri's daughter has intellectual difficulties or deficiencies, so I thank you for coming. Just a real note, back to the employment piece, and I have to say this real quick. My daughter took two buses across county to get to a job. She was at the job for eleven years, never missed a day. So very committed individuals here on the stage, and important to employ them. Thank you.
Make sure, I don't want to cover anybody up. You want to slide up here? Yeah, let's go. I'll stick right here.
Come on, guys. Get up close so they can get your paces.
Be seen.
Come on, guys. Come on up. Be seen and be heard.
All right, you ready? One, two, three.
All right. Thank you, guys, very much for coming tonight. The next proclamation, we're going to give everybody plenty of time. No worries, take your time. But for Customer Service Week, anybody who's here for Customer Service Week, if you want to come on up here, that'd be great. Anybody? Oh, gotcha. We should.
Exactly. One by one.
One by one. At five-seven. Here we go. Here's the dream team coming in. All right, superb. Let's give it just one more minute, thirty more seconds to clear out, and we'll be okay. Yeah, don't be afraid. Scoot in. And I'll tell you when to back up, so yeah. Okay, almost there. Perfect. Okay, this proclamation is in relation to Customer Service Week. So behind us, we have our tremendous customer service team. Many of you guys, whoever interact with the city, this is who you interface with, and thank you, guys, for being here. This proclamation, whereas businesses and government systems, both locally and across the nation, recognize that making a strong commitment to exemplary customer service builds trust and strengthens relationships with customers and clients. And whereas businesses and governments that prioritize the understanding and anticipation of their customer needs set themselves apart by regularly exceeding customer expectations through dedication and professionalism. And whereas the City of Palm Coast's Customer Service Division continues to make a meaningful difference in the lives of its residents by upholding the highest standards of service every day, utilizing innovations, innovative solutions, and demonstrating unwavering care in the responses. And whereas Palm Coast residents have come to rely on the friendly and personalized assistance of the city's customer service representatives, who handle more than a hundred thirty thousand inquiries annually, ensuring that citizens are met with accuracy, friendliness, and respect. And whereas over the past twenty years, the City of Palm Coast has earned a reputation for exceptional customer service, enhancing the quality of life for its residents and setting a benchmark for service excellence in municipal government. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of October seventh be officially designated as Customer Service Week. And we encourage all citizens to celebrate the exceptional work of customer service professionals who contribute to the success and well-being of this community by providing outstanding service every day. Signed this first day of October twenty twenty-four, Kaylee Cook, and signed by Mayor David Althan.
Thank you, everyone. Lisa Asbill, Customer Service Supervisor. Tonight, we celebrate our incredible customer service staff. We're one of the front faces of the city. These dedicated professionals transform inquiries into solutions. These dedicated professionals transform inquiries into solutions and frustrations into satisfaction, embodying our values and commitment to excellence. Great customer service is about building lasting relationships, and our team excels at this. Their hard work and dedication make our city shine, and we thank them for it.
Councilwoman Pontieri will deliver the next proclamation for Fire Prevention Week.
May we have our blue shirts? Come on up here. Come on, guys.
You got fire.
Oh, we're going to do fire first? Okay. I was going to wave, but come on up.
You're blue, too. It's fine.
How are you tonight? Good. While they're making their way up, I have to say, I've gotten one of those famous Outback hugs from Jason, and it will light up your night. So, when you go, definitely go ask for a hug. Hi, guys. How are you? Good, good. Thanks for being here. All right. So, the first proclamation will be our Fire Prevention Week. Whereas fire remains a significant public safety concern, both locally and nationally, with homes being the locations where people are at the greatest risk. And whereas the Palm Coast Fire Department is dedicated to ensuring the safety and security of all residents and visitors. And whereas Palm Coast residents are encouraged to identify fire risks in their homes and take steps to eliminate potential hazards, making their homes safer. And whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, emphasizes the critical role that functioning smoke alarms play in providing early warnings and saving lives. And whereas Palm Coast residents are urged to install smoke alarms in key areas of their homes, regularly test them, and understand how to maintain them for optimal performance. And whereas homes equipped with properly installed and maintained smoke alarms significantly increase the likelihood of surviving a fire. And whereas the Palm Coast Fire Department's first responders are dedicated to reducing home fire incidents and injuries through public education, fire prevention strategies, and swift emergency response. And whereas the exceptional efforts of the Palm Coast Fire Department have played a vital role in safeguarding the lives and property of our community, making Palm Coast a safer place to live, learn, work, and play. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of October 6, 2024, be officially designated as Fire Prevention Week. Signed this first day of October 2024 by our mayor and attested to you by our clerk, Kaylee Cook. And I just want to say, before you all come up here, I cannot speak enough about the wonderful things that our fire department does, not just in their professional capacity, but just in our community. They're just the best of the best. I mean, the people standing behind me and the department that they represent is, you won't find any better. So, except for my husband's. Oh, can't, I can't say that. Oops. But thank you, guys, so much for being here. And if somebody wants to speak, chief, or anybody else?
Speech, speech, speech.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Prepared a little thing to say. Good evening, Mayor Alvin and City Council. I'm Caitlin Baller, driver engineer for the Palm Coast Fire Department and the coordinator for Public Education and Fire Prevention. On behalf of the Palm Coast Fire Department, I want to express our gratitude for recognizing the importance of fire prevention and for joining us in celebrating National Fire Prevention Week. This year's Fire Prevention Week runs from October 6 through the 12th, with the theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You. Smoke alarms significantly reduce the risk of dying in a residential fire by more than half, and we've witnessed firsthand how they save lives in our community. Throughout the month of October, our department will be visiting all elementary, pre-K, and VPK schools across Palm Coast, reaching nearly 10,000 students with essential fire safety lessons. However, fire safety education isn't just for children. Teens, adults, and the elderly are also at risk. That's why it's vital for everyone to take time during Fire Prevention Week to understand how to stay safe in case of a fire. Our fire prevention efforts have already proven successful. In 2015, a seven-year-old student from Imagine School at Town Center used what he had learned to help himself and his brother escape a house fire. In 2020, a Rimfire Elementary student extinguished a fire in her home and called 911, thanks to the lessons she learned during Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week isn't just about educating children. It's about ensuring the safety of all our residents. I'd like to share a few important safety tips for your smoke alarms in the spirit of Fire Prevention Week. Install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside of sleeping areas, and on each level of your home, including the basement. Test your smoke alarms at least once a month by pressing the test button. Replace smoke alarms that are 10 years old or don't respond when tested. Ensure that smoke alarms meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. If you or loved one needs assistance with your smoke detectors, the Palm Coast Fire Department's Home Inspection Program can help. You can sign up online through Palm Coast Connect or call 386-986-2300 for assistance. Thank you once again for the opportunity, and have a safe National Fire Prevention Week.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Great job. We call her the good KB. She's been with us for, is it six years now, KB? I know it doesn't seem like she could possibly have been with us for six years, but she does a great job for us, leading our fire prevention effort, been a part of our fire prevention effort for a few years and just took over recently. But our firefighters are going to be in the schools, talking to your children and your grandchildren. We also have several things available to help our community. And certainly, the residents who have been here for a little while understand the relationship our community has had with fire over the years. And the great Chicago fire that we have Fire Prevention Week because of was a conflagration, where the fire took over almost three square miles. And so, our mission is to always prevent that from happening. We want to save the lives first, save everyone's stuff second, and then get back to living our lives third. Those are kind of our incident priorities. We're incredibly grateful for the support of our community, for the support of the administration here with the city, and for our support of council. And personally, I'm incredibly grateful for the sacrifices made. We have volunteers and career members up here today, and I'm very grateful for all they do to help keep your families safe. So, thank you.
All right. Now the other blue shirts.
You guys all passed the final exam. Good to see you. Okay, good. Good.
All right. Our next one is the Citizens Academy Alumni Ambassador Appreciation Day. Whereas the Palm Coast Citizens Academy provides an exceptional educational experience for residents, offering a behind-the-scenes look into the operations of city government and each department's role in serving the community. And whereas the graduates of the Palm Coast Citizens Academy, now totaling 55 classes, have gained a deep understanding of the services and resources that contribute to the high quality of life in our city. And whereas the 55th graduating class of the Palm Coast Citizens Academy accepted a challenge from Mayor David Alvin to establish a Citizens Academy Alumni Group, dedicated to continuing their role as ambassadors to the city, with the mission of sharing knowledge and fostering greater community engagement. And whereas the Citizens Academy Alumni Ambassadors have rallied together and committed to hosting three open houses annually, specifically designed for new residents, to showcase important city services and vital resources that enhance the well-being of our community. And whereas the efforts of these alumni ambassadors exemplify the spirit of civic pride, collaboration, and volunteerism, as they serve as vital connectors between the City of Palm Coast and its residents, ensuring that accurate and valuable information is shared for the benefit of all. And whereas the City of Palm Coast is proud to recognize the outstanding contributions of the Citizens Academy Alumni Ambassadors, whose ongoing commitment to public service strengthens our community, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council for the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that October 1, 2024, be officially designated as Citizens Academy Alumni Ambassador Appreciation Day. Signed this first day of October, attested to you by Kaylee Cook, and executed by our Mayor David Alvin. And thank you, guys, so much for your contribution to our city. Appreciate it.
I'm new to this. I don't like being the center of attention. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Alvin and City Council, for the wonderful proclamation. On behalf of the Palm Coast Citizens Academy Alumni, we are honored to accept this recognition of our efforts to engage, educate, and empower the residents of Palm Coast. The Citizens Academy was more than just a program. It's a commitment to fostering informed and active citizenship. Since its inception, the goal has been to create a bridge between our local government and the community, ensuring transparency, understanding, and collaboration. We are proud to stand here today, representing all the graduates, past and present, who have taken a step to learn about how our city functions and how they can make a difference. And speaking of making a difference, we are excited to announce our upcoming Welcome to Palm Coast event on January 16th. This event is designed to be a warm and engaging welcome for new residents, and it's also a fantastic opportunity for our Citizens Academy alumni and community members to connect, share experiences, and showcase what makes our city so special. We've planned an exciting lineup that includes an introduction to our city's resources, departments, and services. There will be interactive booths, community leaders ready to answer questions, and opportunities to learn how to get involved in local initiatives and opportunities. We want every new resident to feel a sense of belonging and to understand that Palm Coast is more than just a place to live, it's a commitment, a community to thrive in. We encourage everyone to attend this event, whether you've been here for a month or a decade. It's a chance for us to build strong relationships with our neighbors and to continue fostering a spirit of engagement and involvement. Our city is only as strong as the people who care about it, and we know this group is full of individuals who are passionate about Palm Coast. In closing, we would like to express our sincere gratitude to the City Council for this proclamation, and to all the Citizens Academy alumni for their ongoing dedication. Let's continue to build on the foundation, knowledge, and collaboration, and service that makes Palm Coast a great place to live. We look forward to seeing you all January 16th, and we welcome new friends to celebrate our vibrant community together.
I'm glad everybody came out for this. I was running for city council, and I took this class during that time, and it really enlightened me as to how the city works, because I didn't totally know. All I know is I was running for city council. But I'll tell you, we learned about the hard work that each individual from all the departments put out, and they've actually used their ingenuity to save hundreds of thousands of dollars for Palm Coast because of their hard work. And they need to be, you know, applauded, you know? And every candidate that ever runs for an office in this town, or every citizen ought to go and learn what makes this town tick, because it teaches them. And I'm just glad I went. Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't point out and try to embarrass Mr. Ed Fuller. Ed, raise your hand. Because Ed is the one that picked up the torch for the challenge to bring together this fine group, which we hope will move forward for all time to help unite all of those folks and all of those proclamations that you saw this evening. This is a group that understands and will look out for our very diverse culture and our beautiful community for the future. So, with those blue shirts, Ed, thank you for your service. Our next order of business this evening is public participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card and your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas, or available from the Communications Marketing Director seated in the back. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium and provide their name and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor, be concise and to the point, avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. And may I just ask that you hold your comments that are related to agenda items following in the agenda for that period of time. You will not be allowed to speak of the same issue twice. So, any items that are not on the following agenda, please feel free to come forward. Yes, sir?
Eric Johnston, C-section. Mayor, council members, good to see you tonight.
Thank you.
A little disappointed the meeting was canceled last week, but I understand it was due to illness, and I hope everyone is better. I've come tonight with a list, put together by the Canal Community Coalition, regarding the short-term rental ordinance. Basically, it's a list of changes we'd like to see in the required postings. I will give a list to the clerk. I brought copies for everyone to review. There's just some things that need to be tidied up a bit, and that's it. As the parent of a special-needs child, I want to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Understood.
Good night.
All right. Next speaker, please. Mr. Seib.
Good evening, Jeffrey Seib. Regarding the 2025 budget, it's understood that homeowners pay over 90% of the property tax total, and commercial property pays the rest. But the entire general fund, which includes these taxes and others, makes up less than 20% of the total city budget. A portion of the city budget comes from the fee environment, user fees and impact fees that are tied to growth. Unless we are planning to grow forever with budget growth forever, it's apparent that when and if these fees may start slowing down, we will need a robust commercial business element to pick up the slack. As far as city reserves are concerned, I assume this is the amount contained in the investment portfolio. If we can utilize a greater portion of investment return revenue in our general fund, then we can ensure city needs are met, and we still have the amount of city reserves needed for any situation. Another item that was brought to the council's attention at a recent meeting was the financial state for city golf courses, both public and privately owned. The owner of a private city golf course stated here recently that his course had lost big bucks last, this past year, and so have the other city courses, including our city-owned course at Palm Harbor. City recreational venues usually operate as a service to the community, but that's for the entire city population. If the city venue is used only by a small fraction of the population, then the user fees must be more in line with a similar privately-owned facility. Our parks are here for the people, as they should be. On the borrowing limit referendum, it would be helpful to know what can't be accomplished by our annual city budget financing, thus requiring borrowing, and how the amount and term of the note would affect tax rates and city services. In addition, if by passing this referendum, it would mean the public giving up its responsibility as a partner with the city in designating when large-scale borrowing is needed, then I would say to reject this referendum. These are some of the discussions we still need to have about the budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Ed Fuller of Palm Coast. Please disregard this shirt because I am talking for Tiger Bay. Honorable Mayor, honorable City Councilman and City Councilwoman. I just want to point out, we had a candidate forum last week at the Palm Coast Community Center. It was a terrific event, and I want to congratulate all the candidates who participated and some that couldn't make it because of illnesses. I'm sure that you all can identify with that. But I was really, really impressed with the ability of our employees to pull off that event in such a wonderful professional manner. When you pull off an event and you invite everyone to a political event, you know all eyes are upon you. That place was pristine. Those tables were neat. They were, they had tablecloths on them. There wasn't a wrinkle on there. The restroom, you could have eaten off the floor. The glass, as you enter, spotless. There weren't any smudge marks on there. The lot was spotless. And it really is, it reflects upon our organization as our city and our, and our county. When employees go, and they do that on a daily basis, but I want to say, when you're in an organization, you're putting on something like that, we don't have any compunction whether to host anything over that Palm Coast Community Center with the support that we get from the employees over there. So I want to point out three employees, and I hope I don't slay your names, so I apologize if you're watching. I tried my best, so here we go. Sandy Greenberg, Rain Marti, and Tara Fiero. They were amazing, outstanding, wonderful people. They do their job with, with such grace and aplomb, and it wasn't like anything we asked, they delivered. It wasn't like, oh, you know, not really. It was truly amazing, and it's wonderful to be associated with people like that. It's not a job. It's something they take pride in. It's something our community takes pride in. And I just want to thank the Parks and Recreation people for all you do, and those three individuals. It's amazing. That event was great, and thank you very much, and God bless those three individuals. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another member of the public that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir. Go on, George.
Good evening. George Mayo, Palm Coast. With Hurricane Helene just, thankfully just missed us and gone by, prior to the previous storm, I had asked about sandbags being available, and if you could publish that on the TV stations, Channel 269, and there was nothing from Palm Coast. Every other county, every other community had it listed. They even had addresses. I had my wife look up online, and it said they weren't available at Palm Coast. If that's true, I'd like to know why not. I mean, really, that's the least we could do is have a couple truckloads of sand for the citizens to feel safe when they need to. And as a resident of District Four, I know you're voting tonight. I don't have the resumes that you do, but you want to stop me from, okay. I can't say who I believe would be the one.
Hold that for the agenda item coming up, if you like. Thank you for your comment, George. Next, are there any other members of the public that would like to address me at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public, the early public participation. And just some cleanup business here. Regarding the minutes of the City Council, the minutes of the meeting of September 17th, 2024, it was a business meeting. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion for approval.
Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Seconded.
I have a second from Vice, from Councilman Clufus. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Similarly, for the me, special workshop meeting on September the 17th, 2024, Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Councilman Clufus has made the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And finally, the budget hearing held on September the 25th, 2024, I'd asked for a motion to approve. Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Seconded.
I have a second from Councilman Clufus. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Good, we got that out of the way. We now move to the agenda item G, which will be the appointment process for the vacated seat number four this evening. So we have a process in place. I will also welcome a motion at any time during the process. So if, City Manager, do you want to speak to the process that we have in place?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor.
Could you respond to the sand question real quick as well? The sand question?
Sure. Sure. Just to answer Mr. Mayo's question from public comment, we did send out a press release that goes to the news stations for sandbags. We did, in fact, stand, stand up a sandbag location for our residents at Indian Trail Sports, Con Felix.
Let's get it on the TV next time.
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Just to start us off with the application for seat four, just for the public's knowledge, we have followed our process that City Council has identified. Interviews were held on September 14th. Unfortunately, we were not able to have the workshop to discuss the candidates on September 24th, but you have before you today a worksheet that will help you narrow down the candidates. We're looking for an X next to the names that you would like to move forward, and that would be your process. You would turn those into the clerk, and then that will help you narrow down your process.
Okay, so it's, so it's clear to the public, the process in place presently is that a ballot with all nine applicants will be distributed to each council member. Each council member will mark the three applicants they prefer the most. The clerk will tabulate the marks, the clerk will announce the names, and number of marks for each applicant. If a single applicant receives a majority, then balloting concludes. If multiple applicants are tied, we continue to an additional step. So I'll go back. If a single applicant receives a majority, that would set up the, the ask for a motion, a second, and a vote. So if the clerk would go ahead.
I just want to clarify one thing. It's up to three. You don't have to do three.
Correct.
From our discussion, up to three that we would pick.
That would...
So you could do two, you could do one, you could do three. But you can't do four. Thank you.
Well, actually, the, the instructions say, mark the three applicants they prefer the most.
I believe when we came up with this...
So let me, let me interpret this. When it says the most, if you're unable to get it to the most on three, then yes, of course. Okay?
And for the record, on mine, I did, if anybody wants a public record request, I put three dashes on additional names that I think would totally be fine as an appointment, but I don't think we're going to get there tonight with them, but I wanted to recognize them for their efforts.
All right, Councilman, I appreciate that. We will not. We'll, we'll move forward with the process that I've dictated now. Thank you. While the tabulation is going on, it's the intent of the City Council to appoint a, an applicant this evening, which would require a swearing in. That applicant would join the City Council immediately following the swearing in and be a part of the following agenda for the rest of this meeting this evening. Agenda packages were distributed to all of the potential applicants in advance of this evening's meeting.
Nick, this is normally where you do a little stand-up comedy.
Yeah, how did Harry Potter get down the hill? By running. J.K. Rowling.
Is the clerk ready? Thank you, please.
Thank you for, for filling in that time for me.
No worries.
So Mayor and City Council, the candidates that, I'm sorry, the applicants that received votes from City Council were Mr. Bogus with one, Mr. Boyer with three, Mr. Gambaro with three, Mr. Marusus with one, Mr. Nakabali with one, and Ms. Rodriguez with one. So it's up to City Council how you'd like to continue the process.
So, so we don't have three?
There are two that have three.
No, no, your, the top three in your tabulation.
There would just be a, a top two, and then there are four people who would be in, who qualify for that third spot.
City Council, it's up to your pleasure at this point. You can move forward with the top two in terms of the, the points, or we can continue on to another round.
I think we have two top candidates. I'm good with that. I don't know how the rest of you feel. Sure.
So we have unanimity in moving forward with the top two. Please state their names again.
Absolutely. That was Mr. Boyer and Mr. Gambaro.
I'm just unsure how this played out. I'm just trying to think of the mutations in my head, but I don't know who voted for who. This is a secret, right?
Nope, it is not. So now we, okay, the next part of the process, since we have two candidates to discuss, this would be the time to speak for your choice of one of the two, or a motion would be appropriate at any time.
What time do we go to public comment?
So public comment would, would, would come, let's see, after this discussion.
I would, I would advocate for public comment now. I think it's important.
Would you prefer it now?
That we hear from the public. Yes.
Okay.
I have no objection.
Okay.
I mean, if anybody wants to tell me who they voted for, I can tell you who I voted for. I'm still just a little long.
Let me go to public comment. If, is that okay with you? That seems to be the consensus of City Council.
Somebody is ready to make a motion. If you're ready to make a motion, Nick.
I think we deserve to, or the audience deserves to be heard.
Look, the public, you've got consensus. I think that's correct. Counselor, are you good with that? Okay. Now, any member of the public that wishes to speak on this agenda item at this time, I would invite to come forward to the podium, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Nick Champion. I am the Vice President for the International Brotherhood of Police Officers, which represents the Flagler County deputies. I'm here this evening to show our support and our endorsement for Mr. Boyer for the open seat here tonight. Mr. Boyer advocates for the interests of the welfare of not only our, our members, but the community that he serves in. His mission and his drive is exactly what we look for in a candidate to join you on this council. So with that, our members that work for the Flagler County Sheriff's Office do support and still endorse Mr. Boyer for this vacant seat. And we believe his dynamic vision and proactive approach will be invaluable to being on this seat to join you on your council. I just want to take a quick minute of your time and show our endorsement and support for Mr. Boyer tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another member of the public? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Alfin and Palm Coast City Council members. My name is Diana McLemore, and I'm a resident homeowner here in Palm Coast for six and a half years. I'm not much of a public speaker, but I felt it very important to be here to support Darryl Boyer, a candidate for the seat of Palm Coast City Council Member, District Four. I campaigned for Darryl in his race for District 19 House of Representatives, a race he should have never lost. I'm here before you tonight to also support him in this quest. Darryl has been here his entire life, going through the Flagler County School System, grades K through 12, and is a graduate of Flagler Palm Coast High School. He holds a bachelor's degree in political science and marketing from the University of North Florida, and also holds a master's degree in applied American politics and policy from the Florida State University. He has served as a legislative aide to the State Representative Webster Barnaby. He was a staffer for the Florida House of Representatives clerk, and he was a travel aide for the Florida House Speaker, all while attending college. With that experience and education, he has an acute understanding of government and policies. Darryl has chosen to stay here in our city and resides in the R section. He loves our city and will work hard and do all he can for the citizens of Palm Coast. I'm here asking you to please strongly consider Darryl Boyer for the appointment of District Four Council Seat. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Jeffrey Seib. While I applaud the excellent number of applicants for the City, District Four City Council position, I must reiterate my concerns and opposition to the City Council appointing a candidate to fill this position and term, as opposed to the voters making that decision. This isn't the Politburo. This is America. We vote for our governmental leaders. It's the American way. The city charter is a document that was not sent down from above, but was written by the hand of man, and as such can be amended by that same hand. As our community grows, there are bound to be changes and improvements needed in the charter to continue our growth forward. Additionally, an appointment for an over-two-year position by a soon-to-be departing, for the most part, City Council seems out of place and should be placed on the stack of items for the next council to consider. This is important. In America, we vote. Look at the amount of time, effort, and money that is taking place right now for the vote. You all have, and I know it very well. There is no doubt that you will choose an excellent candidate from this excellent list, but that's not the point. Maybe the voters will choose the worst candidate. Not the point. The voters must have the choice based on what each and every one decides are the key, key features of each candidate on the ballot. The council appointee to the District Four position will serve half of the term that the three new members will serve, and that will be selected by voters. This is like appointing a new member to the Planning Board or another city advisory committee. If the charter says the City Council gets to appoint a council member for this position for that long, then would it not also hold that a future City Council could vote to terminate this appointed council position at any time? Pick a temporary appointment for a brief period until a special election can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I'd like to...
Go ahead and introduce yourself for us.
Oh, my name is Nick DeSantis, AKA The Dogfather. Okay, I was here for a different reason, but I realized Darryl's name has been brought up before you as a member of your council. I could tell you I know Darryl a very long time. I watched him grow into the great man he is today. Him coming on this council would be the biggest boost you can get. His experience, his love for this county is beyond anything we can ever imagine. So I really hope you guys think clearly and pick Darryl Boyer as your next, as our next representative.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
James D. I watched the interviews a couple weeks ago, and I made my notes, and surprisingly, I agree with you guys, well, at least two candidates, Darryl Boyer and Charles Gambaro. Robert Bogus was a good, impressed me. The rest are all kind of weak. I know Darryl, and I've talked to him, and I know he would be good for us. I think that there's one person, I don't want to name the person, but one person was involved in land development and doesn't have any projects in the area yet. And you know how opposed we are to more development and overdevelopment. So even though they didn't get, only got one vote, I think just drop them out of your, your voting. But Darryl is very strong, and someone when you, in the interview process, Mr. Gambaro, he said he would make a good city manager with his qualifications. So I think if he went with Darryl and considered Mr. Gambaro for city manager, I think he'd have a winning solution and make a lot of people happy.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker. Come on up, Eddie.
Eddie Lang, District Four, R section. As much as I applaud this City Council's selection, I'm actually just kind of disheartened that I think there's somebody else should be on that panel, because it should have been three. And Sandra should have been, I was at the interviews, and she gave one of the best interviews that day. And how she wasn't even on your list of one or anything was very disappointing. But, you know, like I said, this is my district. I, she was running, I'd vote for her. The other two candidates are wonderful people. They had great interviews. But I mean, there should have been a third party in this vote here.
Thank you for your comment. Are there, yes, ma'am.
Mayor, Council, thank you.
Evening.
Wendy Tramarchi, Flagler, new Flagler County resident and board member, long-term board member and past president of the Vero Beach and Indian River County Humane Society.
Could you just bring the microphone down just a little bit? You can just pull it down. Thank you.
There we go. After this first vote, I won't give you my three-minute speech. I'll give you the short version. I, after the first vote, I thank the council for not considering Mr. Lyon for that open council seat. His bias as a board member of the Flagler Humane Society that now has animal cruelty charges brought against the Animal Control Officer, Katie Share, and a myriad of other issues being brought before the city and county at this time. I will submit to you pictures of the dog in this cruelty case, and we'll be happy to email clearer pictures. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Kate Gable. I am up here on behalf of my dear friend Sandra Shank. I'm disappointed her name did not make any of your votes. I don't think most of you know what an incredible person Sandra is and what she has done for our community here in Palm Coast, close to 20 years. If you're not aware, Sandra has established two group homes for young men between the ages of 13 and 17 that have had nowhere to go. When the system has given up on them, Sandra has provided a home for these kids. She still has a home. She funded them with her own money. She's also a veteran from the Army. She also has been able to secure seven acres of property for a project called Hope House. This is for kids that are aging out of the foster system and then have nowhere to go. So, I would really highly encourage you to rethink, if it's possible, but you need somebody who actually cares for people in our community and for the ones that don't have a voice. She's been able to speak for them.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Olga Wingard. I'm a Flagler County resident, and I just wanted to take a moment and express my disappointment on not hearing Sandra Shank's name on the candidates that you will be voting on tonight. Like Katie had mentioned, Sandra's been a longstanding member of the community. She's doing a lot for the youth in Flagler County. She's an advocate for homeownership and affordable housing, and I really think we're missing the vote with not having her on the ballot this evening.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I am Sandra Shank, and I thank you to those who offered support on my behalf. One of the things I said that this process would reveal is how political this position is. I am not a politician. I am a humanitarian, committed to serving this community. And though I have not, did not receive a single vote, it is reflective, and I hope that the, the community is paying close attention as to what is going on with this process. I do commend all of those who did apply for appointment with me, and I do know Darrell Boyer. He grew up with my sons. So, I know that he is an upstanding young man with a great future and a tremendous desire to further his career as a politician. I am not a politician. I am a servant and a humanitarian. And again, it is very reflective of the political process. As I know my capabilities, I know my skills, and I know my commitment. And though you did not vote for me, that does not mean that there isn't a vote for me. Thank you. I will continue to serve this community as Vice Chair of the Planning Board and as a member of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and any other door that my God allow opens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Kathy Ostrino. Excuse my modern day room, who I didn't plan to come, but I'm incredibly, certainly not to speak, I'm incredibly disappointed and shocked that Sandra was not, not even one vote. We all know how much she does for this community. She's been serving not just our residents, but this city. She serves constantly, you don't, we see her on the boards, we see the work she does, but then there's all the work that y'all don't see, the phone calls I get when somebody's in trouble and she needs help to help one of our residents. I'm just, I apologize, I didn't prepare. I'm just shook.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
One more.
All right.
It's disappointing when I see folks, and I know it happens, but when folks move into the district that they want. It's not end-all, be-all, but I'm just saying, really? This isn't political?
Next speaker, please.
Yes, George Mayo, Palm Coast. As a resident of District Four, I was here for all the interviews, and I had two people in mind I thought that should be finalists. Sandra Shank was one of them. I, too, am disappointed. I can only think that you're saying, thinking was, well, we want to keep her on the Planning Board, and we'd like to keep her there and not move her to City Council. So, I'm disappointed for you. The other one was Darrell Boyer. Those were my two finalists. So, here, since Ms. Shank is not available, I would like to express my support and my vote for Darrell Boyer. He's a lifetime resident. He knows Palm Coast, and I would like to go with that.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
I have to say, my name is Celia Puglisi. I live here since 1991, and I have to say, as per looking at all the candidates we had, the council have made a very good choice. The, the two candidates are the ones that the community likes or, or has known one for a while, and I don't know whom you're going to choose. Both candidates are excellent to serve the city of Palm Coast. And the only thing I'm asking right now to both of them is whoever is elected, please remember to lobby for the residents first, because unfortunately, in this election, we have a result of what is when we come here and plead for traffic problems, for, for flooding, for, you know, saving our resorts, destinations, against so much unplanned growth, and we are not heard, and our pleads, our pleads are not, you know, resolved. This is the sad result for us, because we have to change. So, these two candidates that we have now, they are both excellent, and I would ask them, please, remember us, the residents, so we can keep you here forever, if it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time? Sing, yes, sir.
Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Councilman Ed Fuller. First of all, I want to congratulate all the candidates who put their name for submission for appointment. That is a, that is a Herculean task to put your name out there and then, and run for, seek an appointment. You get scrutiny, and it's certainly out there, and I really appreciate everyone who did put their name in there. That said, you have to play Solomon today. That's not an easy task. Some people will be happy, some people won't be. But at the end of the day, when you make your decision, it's what separates the two candidates in your mind and in your decision-making. Both very qualified, but one of the candidates, when he goes to Tallahassee, they know him. They shake his hand. They recognize him. He's been up there. He's been up there with the Speaker of the House, Paul Renner. He wasn't just up there glad-handing. He was out there watching the legislation, see how it goes. We're going to need that type of relationship. We're going to have to have that type of relationship, and I think that's what separates Darrell. And that's very important, because when you go up to Tallahassee, you have to know the people, the movers and the shakers. He's a known entity and quantity. They know him, and I know you know that, and that does account, and that separates him, markedly so. I'm not saying anything against the other candidate. Can't do that. But when you, when you make that decision, and we're going to need Tallahassee's help, God knows we're going to need their help, who's got, who's got that relationship? Who's got the gravitas? And who's got the know, uh, knowledge to make that happen? Darrell does. He truly does. He's been there for several years, and he's with Paul Renner, one of the best Speaker of the Houses we've had. Think about that. Think about that. Thank you very much. God bless you. Good luck.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any remaining speakers? Yes, sir.
Mark Stansel, Seminole Woods. Whatever candidate that you decide on, I'm sure you'll, it's a tough decision, and you'll make that. My only thing I suggest is whoever you choose, make it mandatory that they go through the Citizens Academy.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Young lady, did you want to make a comment this evening? Sure. Okay, if there are no other members of the public that would like to make comment at this time, I'll close public comment on this item. I'll come back to City Council. Remember, a motion will be accepted at any time. Vice Mayor, do you have a comment or discussion at this moment?
At this moment, my only concern, and I like Darrell, I know Darrell, but he moved into the district five days after losing his primary. And it's kind of what happened to Darrell. I mean, Sam Greco moved into his district, you know, out of nowhere, and Darrell had a legitimate complaint, I think, that he felt like was dealing with a carpetbagger. So, you just can't move into a district, you know, after you lose an election and expect to get voted on. I just find that totally wrong. I would also like to remind this council, while Darrell has spent a little time in Tallahassee, our Speaker, Paul Renner, did not support him. Supported Sam Greco. So, I don't know how much gravitas he, he has going up to Tallahassee. I, I just don't know. I don't know how much life experience he has. But on the other hand, we have a candidate that has a tremendous amount of life experience, a brigadier general who served in the White House, who's done, if you read his resume, it's just blows you away. So, as much as I like Darrell, I, I can't vote for Darrell, and that's the only comment I have right now.
Councilman, did you want to make any comment at this time?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Darrell Boyer to this, to Seat Four. I, I understand the positions that you've put forth, Vice Mayor. I think that moving into a district in a city does not qualify somebody as a carpetbagger. Darrell grew up here. He knows this community very well. And while I can appreciate your resume, Mr. Gambaro, it is very impressive. I think that when we're looking for somebody to represent us locally, it requires a different institutional knowledge. And when I look at somebody who I think locally will represent the actual needs of our residents, who has experienced the needs next door to our residents, Mr. Boyer is the proper choice for this seat. For that reason, I, I make a motion to appoint him.
So, the motion to appoint will require a second, so I'll have to ask, is there a second available at this time?
I will second for discussion. Would appreciate it. Coming down here before we made a motion.
So, Councilman Clovis has made a second, so now I'll open up discussion again, so we'll start with discussion with you.
Sure. Okay, so, I've known Darrell since, I mean, probably now nine years, and he's a great gentleman. I have nothing against Darrell at all. I think he would do well in this seat. I think our council, the success of our council is a function of our diversity, right? So, not only, you know, the color of our skin, but the, our ages, whether or not we have children, these are the type of different perspectives that I value in this position, because if you have five of the same people sitting up here, it's not what you want. You're looking for five different vantage points. Now, with that being said, I think Darrell offers a unique perspective, given his position in our community, the fact that he's knocked on thousands of doors because he had to with his campaign. I think that gives him leverage for boots-on-the-ground, you know, type relationships with humans. But then I come back to Mr. Gambaro, and I look at his record that's decorated, you know, no pun intended, with military, but it is star-studded in regards to talent acquisition. And I, I look also at what the future needs for our city council are going to be in the immediate future, and I look at the most difficult decision that we're probably going to have to make is hiring the next city manager. So, there's no, and, and I know this by serving eight years, there's no way that you can replace experience with anything else besides experience. And that's the only thing that I see holding Darrell back, and I say that in the, in, I mean, no ill respect to Darrell. But does the ability of Mr. Gambaro to place excellence in our city manager and have the, I don't want to say, you know, tough shell, but you have seen a lot of things in your life, and you've placed a lot of people in very high-ranking positions, that it's, it's very important when you operate at a national military level that you instill greatness at your command centers and, and your leaders. And I think that will probably be the hardest decision that this future council's going to have to make almost immediately, besides, you know, potentially funding additional water utility stuff. That's the number-one issue that I see in my mind. So, I would like to hear from the council how we weigh those two things of boots-on-the-ground effectiveness with having communication between our citizens, which I think is huge, and I don't think it can be minimized, but also the talent acquisition, the experience, the things that we expect as a council that are going to be very difficult for the next council coming in, who are going to all be essentially green behind the ears to accomplish successfully. So, that was the conversation I would like to have.
Thank you. Is there any additional conversation, discussion with regard to the, with regard to the motion on the floor?
I'm, I, I agree with everything you just said.
Councilman Pottery.
Yeah, it's just one more thing. You know, I, I set out at the beginning of this, and I, I made it very clear that I wanted this to be as democratic a process as possible, because we are appointing somebody. We decided as a council, and I still agree, that we needed to have somebody in that seat. We've already had examples where we haven't had majority votes, because we are, we're gridlocked at Four. I think that, you know, with Mr. Boyer campaigning, knocking on doors, meeting so many folks, and getting thousands of votes from this community, that's important and can't be overlooked. Because we are appointing, I think it's very important to know and to recognize the fact that he's already been chosen by a lot of our residents. So, effectively, even though we are appointing, if we appoint Mr. Boyer, we are doing something that a lot of the residents have already, have already chosen. Now, did he win his primary? No, he didn't. I won't speak to the money that got poured into the other guy's campaign, beyond the fact that the other guy got a lot of money, a lot of money that this community frowns upon. So, with that, I think that it's important to note that we already have a lot of residents who have voiced their support for him. Just one more thing, I do want to, to thank the other candidates, and Ms. Shank, I need you on PLDRB. I need you there. So, that's all I have to say.
First of all, I do, I want, I'll take this moment, I was going to wait till the end, to thank every one of the applicants that went through this trying process. There's a lot to it, and I can't respect each one of you anymore, and of course, I want each one of you to continue to serve the city in any way you can and keep your eye on what happens next. And for, for God's sake, please make sure you attend the Blue Shirt Alumni Citizens Academy at some point in time. I think it's really very special, very important. Council members have made...
I just wanted to add one thing.
Can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were...
No, not quite yet. Let me get my breath out. Don't worry, you'll get your time.
I will.
Each council member, including the Vice Mayor, has made excellent points, and I have not commented up to this point in the proceedings, but I will tell you that what I am struggling with, because obviously both candidates are, you know, at the top of the list, is my focus is entirely on the identif, the search, the identification, and the selection of an exceptional city manager, which this city has sorely needed for a very long time. It is my opinion that as much as the City Council may contribute to the process of government with the charter and the organization of the city of Palm Coast, it is the city manager, which in effect makes it happen. It is the city manager that will actually get the things done that the residents of the city of Palm Coast want. Therefore, I'm trying to peel away the fan favorite and look at where is this city going to get its, not only identify and hire its best city manager, but then who will be able to speak to a city council, to this new city manager, to make sure that the vision is properly shared and followed up with the city manager, so that all of staff finally has all of the direction that they so sorely need in the future. I mean, no negative comment whatsoever to our current city manager, Chief of Staff, to those that have stepped in during what have been very, very trying times. I've heard comments tonight about wants and wishes of things that have been in progress and will actually come to fulfillment, as long as the community understands that there is never instant gratification. These projects take a long time to put into place. They have... They have all been worked on, and many of you have been to those meetings to discuss those items and have actually heard the progress and the process going forward. So again, in my mind, I thank you for your comments, all of you, and I do look forward to, I will vote for a candidate who I believe will make the best selection for a city manager in the future. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to Ms. Pontieri, I appreciate everything you said about Darrell knocking on doors. I know how much he worked, how much he knocked on doors, I was out there. It's a lot of work. You've done it. He did get votes, but he did not win his election. And my only suggestion, and I say this with the deepest respect for him, is in two years you can run again for this office, and you'll have a little more experience underneath your belt, and perhaps you'll win. You're a great guy. But I just, again, find that when we have a choice here between Darrell and another candidate who has far more experience, I have to lean towards the experience, and that's where I'm at on this, so.
All right, any final comments before I call the vote?
I just think that the experience is subjective, and, and we're either looking at a, we're looking at experience in our community that's lived here for, I don't know how old Darrell is, I think 25, 25 years, or we're looking at experience that may be on a national level. But again, local politics and national politics are very different, and I hope that as a community, we can keep it that way. I mean, we're, these are technically nonpartisan seats. So I just, I ask the council to consider that. I agree with your comments regarding the choice of a city manager, but we also need to choose a city manager that is in touch with our resident needs, and we need, it is incumbent upon us to be the mouthpieces of our residents, and there's nobody else better to do that in the candidate pool than Mr. Boyer. And so that experience, to me, trumps the experience of somebody who has been in the White House.
Well, he wasn't just in the White House, he served on school board too, I might remind you of that, on Flagler School Board.
And he lost his race.
He did lose a race, but he served on school board, so he has that local experience, that military experience, which is invaluable, the White House experience, I mean, just a broad, broad range of experience. So that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I'm, it concerns-
You started, you want to go again?
Yeah, it just worries me a little bit that we are kind of making this a political thing, too. I don't believe that Mr. Gambero stands, I haven't, as far as I'm aware, he doesn't hang around those circles, and I think that's a good thing. If we're trying to keep politics out of local government, then we don't want someone who hangs around the, you know, the usuals, if I may say, and also, you know, the crazies at times. So I think that isolation may actually be a pro in that, in that regard, but I was just curious, do we all agree that, and this is Councilwoman Pontieri, do we all agree that the city manager is going to be pretty much the most important thing on the forefront of our next city council? I mean, if this is the time to do some convincing, if it's not, then we can talk about the other things that we need to kind of drive home for why one decision might be better than the other. But I don't, I don't like bringing in the political wins or losses into this, but I also don't like that we would discredit someone's standing with their military background and that level of service to our country. I, again, I don't want to bring politics into this, but I think it keeps getting dripped in here, and I'm not certain how we can eliminate that from local politics because it doesn't belong in here.
Okay. We've had a motion, a second, we've had-
Also, Mr. Mayor, could you explain what level of votes we need to get to actually codify this?
So the, the, the appointment would require three votes. Okay, that's, counselor, do you want to weigh in on that? Is that correct?
Yes, in this particular area where we're appointing a seat, the charter requires that it be a majority, so that would be-
Majority that's present, thank you. So with that, if, and we've already had public comment, if you all are agreed, we'll proceed to a roll call.
Well, so here's my opinion, is, do we need to do that? If we can come to a consensus between us, let's not subject to someone being voted no. Let's do our job up here, and let's try to come to a consensus.
Well, I have, I have a motion and a second, so that would, are you requesting that the motion be withdrawn?
If, so if I withdraw my second, that can't be placed back on the floor, correct?
Correct, but I'd have to have a withdrawal, I'd have to have a withdrawal of the motion.
If I withdraw my second of the motion, would I be able to, then, if Councilwoman Pontieri removed her motion, would I be able to, would I be able to make that same motion and then have her second, just essentially so that we could flip-flop, so that we don't have to vote someone no? Let's do our job up here, let's figure out who we want to sit in this position, and then let's appoint them. I don't know if we need to do a yes-no vote and have somebody lose this.
Yes, if you withdraw your second, yes, that would push it back onto the floor.
Okay, so I think more discussion is needed. Can we get to where we are deciding who we want before we go on this back-and-forth?
See what you're trying to do, but at a certain point, we're going to have to vote.
Yeah, sure.
So just, I just need to interject clarification of what you're going forward with.
Further discussion to see if we have consensus among who we think should be appointed to this seat.
So are you withdrawing your second?
Do I need to do that right now? We can, we can just postpone the vote for a second, right? We're still discussing.
I haven't called for the vote yet, so if you would like to have some additional discussion, that would be the time to have it.
Sure, yeah, that's my additional input. Are we able to get there?
So I want to address your, I think, what your specific concern about the city manager is. I, I, yes, I think that this board, the future decision that this board makes in appointing the, or hiring the city manager, is the most important decision. I, I just think that, and, and, you know, it's my position that whoever we hire needs to be somebody that comes in with a fresh set of eyes and can look at things differently than somebody who's been in the organization for years and years. I think Denise's institutional knowledge in our organization was a gift, but I do think a fresh set of eyes is important. With that said, I still think that whoever is advocating for certain policy, because we direct policy up here, to that city manager, to, who then trickles it down to staff, needs to be somebody who is very in touch with our community. And so I hear what you're saying about the experience of Mr. Gambero being very important in choosing that person. I just feel that whoever, whoever is sitting up here needs to be very in tune with the needs of our community, and I just feel that Mr. Boyer is more in touch with those needs than anybody, really.
Okay, comment?
I disagree with that, but that's okay. I think, I think the general has lived here a long time, and he has a lot of experience here, and he's run businesses, and he's served on school board, and he served as a general. He still serves in the Army Reserve. I think in picking a next city manager, his, his skills, his talents, his, his background will lend an awful lot to that selection of a new city manager. You know, unfortunately, three of us won't be up here to do it, but I, again, no disrespect to Darrell, but he's 25 years old, and you could say he lived here 25 years, but not as an adult, not as a property owner, not as a business owner. Again, I like Darrell a lot, and I think he's probably got a pretty bright future. But I think what we need now is somebody with an incredible amount of experience to help the next city council make that right decision on the city manager.
Can I just directly respond to something? The, the age of Mr. Boyer is, is, in my mind, a plus. And I say that because we know we have an issue in this community with keeping our young people here, rather than having them get shipped out to find a job or to find housing. That is one of the struggles that this community has. He has personally lived it, and he's spoken about it, and he's advocated for solutions to it. When he was standing at that podium, and I asked, what is your solution to affordable housing? The response wasn't, let's put up more houses and more apartments. The response was jobs, industry, jobs. That's what the community needs. That's the answer of somebody who knows what our community needs.
Or somebody who's a pretty good politician at that age.
Councilman, did you want to finish off some discussion?
No, I also would value Darrell's age as a plus, and honest to goodness, that's what I said earlier, is that the success of our council is a function of our diversity, and that's also why I thought Demetrius would be a great choice, because he has a family in our City of Palm Coast, and I think that he brings value to that, to this council.
Okay, the, the only other comment, I mean, I don't want to be repetitive and repeat other folks' comments here, is I think I do appreciate Councilwoman Pontieri's comment about politics and the fresh set of eyes to look for, to have a, really, a non-aligned city council member who has not been a part of the, the network, if you will, of the, the City of Palm Coast. So I'll base my decision, again, once first, of course, on the city manager and the fact of somebody that is, is up here to represent the community with no ties. Now, you know, having a great many friends in the community is great. Worries me just a tad about how much influence and direction that might impart. That's a personal, you know, issue of mine. I have nearly not so many friends, so it's not a problem for me. But, so those would be the two, the two items that I will stand next to as we go through this vote or however many votes we go through. So if there's no further discussion-
I don't, I think that we have, both of these candidates, I think, are going to do a fine job, and I think there's value in both of them. I'm okay with Darrell being put into this seat, and I'm also okay with Charles being put into the seat, excuse me, Mr. Gambero. Yeah, that's, that's how I feel.
You know, you're back to the Solomon comment, which was so appropriately offered earlier this evening, I think by, by our friend there, Mr., you know. So it's time to, to split that, that decision apart with the hopes that if all are genuine, the all will find their way to serve. If it's not the moment, then there will be a next moment, and a next moment, and a next moment. The City of Palm Coast has an incredibly opportunistic future ahead of it, which should and will be decided, of course, by the residents through their city council and then down through their city manager and staff. But there is nothing but wonderful opportunity to look forward to in the future. Both are qualified, both are capable, as were all of the applicants that stood forward, and we certainly have so many different opportunities for each to serve. So with that, Carrie, I ask you to call the roll call.
Vice Mayor Danko?
I'm, I'm sorry.
So the motion on the floor was made by Councilwoman Pontieri in favor of the appointment for Mr. Boyer.
Nick did not withdraw. I did not, okay.
Not.
No.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alfin?
No.
The motion does not have a majority.
Well, I will make the next motion, then, obviously, because we only have one other candidate, to nominate Charles for this position.
I'll second that motion.
Can we have discussion?
Of course, so wait, hold on, so now we have a motion and a second, and we will have a discussion first by city council.
I think I've said everything I've needed to say on this matter, so I'm through discussing it. I think we've all pretty much have gone back and forth, but please.
To the extent that this, there was a sunshine violation via email regarding this vote, and it needs to be, I don't know what council needs to do about it, but there was an email that was sent regarding appointment of a member. It was responded to by a member, all of us were on it, and it occurred, I believe, today, I'm, I'm in my email now and seeing it. And I, so I don't know, I looked at council as to what we will do. It is directly related to this motion.
What I would advise is that if you can send me that email, and I can investigate it further, and then make a recommendation to this council, I don't have enough facts, other than that, I need to review it before I make anything. Usually with sunshine violations, I get the direction of council, and we, if it needs be to go forward, we draft something to the state attorney's office if it goes down that road, but I don't think we're there yet. I would need to review what the emails are, and are they, in fact, sunshine violations?
Let me be clear, I don't think this person meant to violate sunshine, but it, it allowed us to know how they would be voting tonight, so it's relevant.
Counselor, I think the question actually is, does that information affect the current voting process that we're going through, in your opinion?
Mr. Mayor, if you give me a couple minutes to review your policy and procedures.
Can we just, can we explain a little bit to the public, because this feels like there's a lot of eyes on us right now? Essentially, Vice Mayor Danko replied all to an email that was just showing support for one of the candidates. I haven't seen that yet, now I see it.
I hit reply all.
It seems to me.
Well, it was a total accident.
You did it on two emails, though.
It was a total accident, I'm sorry, because one person asked me if I would support this person, and I said no, and another person asked me if I would support that person, and I said yes. I think it was pretty clear from when we did the interviews a couple weeks ago where I was, where I stood on this. So the fact that I accidentally replied all, I don't think it was any surprise to you, to anyone up here where I stood.
Counselor, the question then becomes, does this color the, the, the vote that we're, we're working with?
Sorry, can you repeat your question?
So the question is, does this issue that the councilwoman has brought forward affect the vote that we are about to take?
Again, I don't-
I guess, let me, let me make it simpler. Should we ask each council member, does it affect their ability to vote? Is that a fair question?
I think you're fine answering that question. I would say that this was not a private vote, however, I would say that voting and letting anyone know how you're going to vote in an email would be a sunshine violation.
But the question remains, is the sunshine violation affecting each council member's vote?
At this time, I do not have enough facts to make that conclusion.
So council members, I'm going to have to ask each one of you, do you feel that your vote is being influenced by the information that Councilwoman Pontieri has brought forward?
Well, first, I will say, I didn't know I replied all, but I made my, my position pretty obvious when we interviewed the candidates. I let Darrell know I couldn't support him right off the bat because he moved into the district five days after losing his election, and I just said, I'm sorry, I can't support you for that. So that's not a surprise to anyone. And I responded to one citizen who asked me a question, and I accidentally hit reply all. We've all done that on occasion up here. We all have, it's been a mistake, you know, and, you know, with nothing intentional, so it certainly doesn't affect my vote, and, and, go on.
Counselor?
No, I, I wanted to make it very clear, I don't think you did it intentionally.
Thank you.
I've said that twice now, but the issue remains, we had a tally beforehand where certain candidates had to get a certain amount of votes to move forward to the top three. And so in my mind, and of course, everybody can speak for themselves, I do think that that is relevant to the first tally, more so than, than where we're at right now. But obviously, it didn't affect me because I did not vote for Mr. Gambero, so.
So I'll chime in, it did not affect me. Councilwoman Clufus, did it affect you?
No, as much as I would like to hang Ed out over the fire, this one did not impact me.
All right, let's, I don't want to go there.
Oh, fair.
So, counselor, just for the record, okay, city council members have indicated that whatever had transpired, I'm not really familiar with it, it does not affect their vote at the present time. So with that, Vice Mayor, I think you made a vote, you made a, a motion?
Mr. Clufus, seconded.
And seconded. So, Counselor, help me with this, I've already been out to the public.
Yeah, this does not need to go out to public comment.
Not again, I can't.
We're just at discussion right now.
Okay, all right, I can't do it. All right, then, call it.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
No.
Mayor Alfin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to one.
Congratulations, Mr. Gambero, and thank you all for your, for your investment in this process. All right, with that, we'll move directly to what is the oath of office.
Mr. Gambero, if you can please meet me at the podium.
That is a great foot to start, Alfin.
And I answered no to the other. I didn't know, I did it twice.
Absolutely.
And, you know, when you're on your phone, it's not like you're on the microphone. It's like, it's so easy.
Is your right hand on feet, Dr. Mee?
Aye.
Aye, Charles Anthony Gambero, Jr.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend?
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and Government of the United States?
The Constitution and Government of the United States.
And the State of Florida?
And the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified?
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution of the United States?
To hold office?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. To hold office under the Constitution of the state.
To hold office under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties?
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of council member?
Of council member.
Of the city of Palm Coast?
Of the city of Palm Coast.
On which I am now about to enter?
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Get your life to smile.
Oh, was it really? Oh, man. Welcome aboard.
Okay, I am pleased to report that after these several years, the city council members are in their correctly numbered seats. This is the first time that's happened in a very long time, by district. Okay.
Does our new councilman have any words I want to hear?
Of course he does.
I do. Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, my fellow city council members, and my fellow citizens of Palm Coast. I can't tell you how humbled I am by the confidence and support of this council, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity to serve our city and community. So a special thank you to Team Gambero for their steadfast support over my many years of public service. Over the past two months, I've had the opportunity to listen to the concerns of our citizens, community leaders, business leaders, and others. And it is absolutely clear to me that the hiring of a new city manager is a priority for our citizens, and I would say probably the priority for our citizens and our municipalities as a whole. I intend to be very involved in the selection process to select a strong, proven leader that can follow the intent and guidance of this council, drive our staff to execute as directed, but also mentor our staff, and help lead our city for many years to come. And with that, I just want to say thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I do have an item for discussion that's not currently on the agenda, but we'll, I'll bring it up at that point.
So when we get to the city council member comments at the end, you're welcome to bring that forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. So, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. All right, with that, we'll move right to presentations. Agenda letter I this evening. The first one is a presentation, the community center parking lot design expansion update.
Thank you, Mayor. While staff is getting ready for this presentation, just wanted to remind you that this is a part of your strategic action plan for your focus on infrastructure. And prior to that, it's been a longstanding priority. So Mr. Gibbo is going to give you a great presentation on a couple of options that we have.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Council. Mayor Alvin, I'm Eric Gibbo, architect for the Stormwater and Engineering Department, and I am pleased to present to council design options for the development of the existing Fire Station 22 site for additional community center parking. Under the city's strategic action plan, pillars of priority for safe and reliable services, the providing of additional parking for the community center was reviewed. Parks and Recreation and the Fire Department presented to council in February of 2023, an evaluation that was performed outlining the need for additional parking for the community center and the inability to provide the required parking on the existing site. An assessment of Fire Station 22 was later performed by Schenkel-Schulz to determine the feasibility of adaptively reusing the building to serve alternate functions. Part of this assessment was to review options for developing the site and the adjacent city-owned parcel to be used for the community center parking. Chapter five of the city's land development code requires 193 spaces based on the building area. There are currently 138 spaces provided. Parks and Recreation has indicated, looking at historical data, that parking needs to, parking needs exceed 250 spaces during events. As a result, staggered programming is required to minimize the influx of vehicles on site, and an average of seven meeting room rentals per month are turned away. This presentation explores the options for the, for the Station 22 site, along with the adjacent vacant site to the east, being utilized to address the inadequate number of parking spaces serving the center. As mentioned, there is no opportunity for onsite parking expansion, and with the Station 22 site adjacency to the community center, it allows for convenient accessibility to the facility. The original master plan for the community center always contemplated expanding onto the adjacent parcels to address future parking needs of the, of the facility. The city has explored opportunities that would allow for additional parking at nearby businesses and organizations, such as the Florida Healthcare, Brookdale Assisted Living, St. Mark's Lutheran Church, and the Palm Harbor Office Park, but these are not a long-term solution due to the liability issues, time-of-day constraints, and distance from the center. The Fire Station site is an ideal solution. The Fire Station site encompasses just under one acre and is not impacted by areas of wetlands or the floodplain. The under, the undeveloped parcel to the east does include wetlands that will need to be mitigated with any future construction. Schenkel-Schulz has provided two options for the development of the Station 22 site and the adjacent parcel. Option one maximizes the number of parking spaces by expanding onto the, onto the adjacent parcel. In this design, the existing building remains with the potential of being renovated and repurposed for a multitude of other, of uses, such as a history museum, an arts venue, or various other public events gathering spaces. The adjacent parcel would be developed, allowing for 90 new spaces or a total of 20, 228 spaces available. A culvert would need to be constructed to address the existing drainage conditions on the east parcel. The goal of this design was to keep as many historic trees as possible, provide a maximum number of parking spaces, and keep the existing building for an alternate use. With this, with this option and the, and the one to follow, the ingress and egress from the parking was thoughtfully located off the access road to the south to minimize potential congestion on Clubhouse Drive and allow for an easy connection to and from the center. The estimate for developing this, the site in this option is 2.2 million. The conceptual cost to renovate the building would be an additional 1.1 million, and this is wholly dependent upon the use of the building. In option two, the fire station is removed and replaced with parking. Although also expanding onto the east parcel, a portion of it remains undeveloped with no modifications made to the existing drainage ditch. Eighty-five new parking spaces are created, resulting in 223 total parking spaces available. The estimate, estimated cost for this option is 1.65 million. This option does allow for future parking expansion to the east, adding 36 spaces.
So I just have a quick question, because I realize these are estimates. We haven't put any of this out to bid. So where did we get the estimates from?
We do have, we do have Wharton Smith and Schenkel-Schulz here, and they can answer any questions regarding the development of the estimate.
Thank you.
So due to the steps required to deal with the drainage and the wetland mitigation, the estimated cost for the additional parking is 1.1 million, but we then have to meet, but then that would meet the, the parking needs of the center. Site design can begin in October upon council approval, approval of a direction, with construction beginning in early 2026 upon the completion of the new Fire Station 22 and the vacating, vacating of the existing building in November of 2025. Today, we're requesting direction from council regarding, regarding the development of the existing Fire Station 22 site. Option one would be to keep the existing building and develop the remaining, the remainder of the Fire Station parcel and the parcel to the east to create 90 new parking spaces. In option two, the building would be removed and 85 parking spaces would be created. The potential expansion would increase the number of parking spaces to 121. Future staff actions would be to negotiation of a design fee and scope to present to council for approval. Funding has been budgeted in the design, in, for the design in fiscal year 25 CIP. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And city council, if you recall, this was presented to you before. You asked us to come back with how many parking spaces could we get, and what would those estimates would be?
So with the existing building just remaining with no modifications, it's basically shut down, correct?
It does have some functional issues that would need to be addressed.
Right. So it's not up the code.
No, no, sir.
Yeah. So we would basically shut it down and just leave it sit there for a future date down the road.
We would have to, yeah.
Got it.
Counselor.
So, and when I'm looking at the two options, option one and option two, I'm having a hard time reconciling how the, the probable cost in option one for the parking only is 2.2 million, but the probable cost for option two is 1.65 million, when it seems to me that option two entails, and maybe it doesn't, maybe I'm just looking at it incorrectly, entails removal of the building. So can you explain to me how just providing for the parking is more an option one than it is an option two?
Because in option one, we're mitigating the wetlands and having to add, we're having to deal with the storm drainage on the east side.
Okay.
And that's the substantial cost associated with option two. If we were to expand to, for 36 additional parking spaces, that's why that expansion is an additional 1.1 million.
Okay, so you're telling, and I would need to see this, because I'm sorry, it's very hard, again, for me to reconcile. Tearing down the building is going to be less expensive than the, than the wetland mitigation?
In this case, well, in this case, it's, it's an exact, the, the cost is the same. It's 1.1 million to mitigate, to, to, to mitigate the, the wetlands in option two, and it's also 1.1 million to renovate the building. So in this case, it just happens to be the same cost.
So what does option two then entail as far as the 1.65 million that we're looking at?
That is, that is for the, for removing the existing building and creating the parking.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. Removing the building for, to provide for the parking in option two is less expensive than mitigating the wetlands in option one at 2.2 million?
Correct.
Okay, and have, has that part been bid?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Has, has that part of the project actually been bid, or are we just?
No, these are, these are estimates.
Okay.
But all, all these numbers are coming from our construction management firm, Wharton Smith. So we did have a design consultant that took the plans to about 30% design level, where we actually studied the wetlands, we did geotechnical borings, we did actual civil drawing layout, we identified the quantities. Our construction management firm went through those 30% drawings and put together numbers based on their historical data on site development costs. So these numbers are fairly solid at, you know, a 30% design level project. You know, demolition of a building is, is inexpensive, you know, because it's just a matter of hauling away the debris. You know, it's not a lot, too, taking down the building in terms of cost. You know, the biggest cost is on the east side, where we have a drainage ditch. We have to install cover pipes, we have head walls, concrete head walls that have to get reconstructed, we have wetlands we have to impact, and some, some fill, and, you know, a lot of earthwork. So it's very expensive on the east end of the site to develop that piece of the property.
And Ms. Pontieri, that's highlighted on your screen in yellow.
Mm-hmm. And there's no other way to accomplish, maybe not all of the parking spot, the parking spaces that you've outlined, but maybe a portion of them without going through that process? Like, do, is there an option three here, is what I'm pretty much asking?
Are you, are you asking if the, the wetland, do you see, do you need to see the delineation of the wetland boundaries? Maybe that's the question?
Well.
I think the question might be.
Are you looking at option one, keeping the building but not developing the parking all the way to the east?
Correct. Yes, sir.
I mean, right now, even with this parking, we're not meeting the needs that, the, of the community center that I need to fully program the facility. So this new building is also going to require some parking, depending on if they hold concurrent events. So, yes, we could phase in that parking. Obviously, when you phase construction, it's more costly than to do it all at once. But in our five-year plan, we did budget, I want to say, three and a half million dollars for this project, and that would include the costs associated with option one, renovating the building and doing all this parking. So we have contemplated and have budgeted what we're proposing for option one or option two that could cover the cost based on our current five-year CIP.
And that was my next question. So in our current five-year CIP, we have already budgeted for being able to save the oldest building in the city of Palm Coast?
Well, that'd be council's direction. We, we, we have funding for either option.
Okay, thank you.
That's the direction we're seeking tonight, is if we want to proceed with design, we have design in the current year budget, you know, that just started, to do the design, which, as we negotiate, we could do some programming on the building and, and program out the building and, and really fine tune what that building is, is going to be and what improvements need to occur.
Okay. I don't have any other, thank you very much, and thank you, Eric.
Let me, let me put a question for you, the one that I, you'll get to eventually. Based on some of the, the multitude of gubernatorial programs for preserving green space, canopy, and perhaps wetland, is there an opportunity to decrease the city's cost by requesting appropriation for such a thing, to facilitate this project or reduce its cost?
I know you can get appropriations to buy land to preserve the land. I don't believe we would get appropriation to buy land to develop a parking lot. I, I don't, I'm.
Well, I'm looking, and I'm with you, because I think that maybe, maybe getting appropriations to preserve this and turn it into something for the historical site.
Well, it's got two pieces to it. It, it's an interesting story. It's just, it's something to put on.
We, we have thought.
For direction to staff, I would certainly, I hope you agree, I'd like the staff to look into the possibility that the, the combination of these two projects that we're talking about, you know, the preservation and wetland mitigation, and I know it's parking involved as well, but adds so much to the community that there may be something out there for us. So that would be just a, put that on your to-do list, assuming that we move forward with some decision tonight, okay?
Correct. And I believe last year, we did seek appropriation for
Okay.
the renovation of the historic fire station, but I don't believe it met the criteria, and it wasn't moving along.
Okay. Well, we'd have more information now, but.
We didn't get any appropriations for it.
No.
But we asked.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We did, we did ask, it just, it never made it.
Hey, please.
Again?
Yes, of course, because we, we didn't have it boiled down in terms of appropriation for number one and number two. So we can have a much more specific ask this time around.
Before moving forward, we should ask again.
Well, we're only talking about the design tonight. I mean, we're not committing to a project. We're, we're, we're taking the design further down the road.
So we could take both, both options down?
Or, or you can, down the road, there'll be, in the, in the next city council, they can squash it.
I, I'll just advocate for this. Once we remove this building, there's no going back.
Correct.
So I think that.
We're not voting on that tonight.
Well, we are.
Need direction, yes.
Because they need direction on whether or not we're doing.
Oh, you want the actual?
Mine order two, because we can't have.
I'm sorry.
We'd be a lot more costly to design, design two projects. So we, we're looking to only design one.
But, but you're asking us to vote on you to proceed with the design. That's my understanding from, that's my, excuse me, that's my understanding from the agenda. Are you also asking for us for an approval to proceed with construction?
No, we, right now.
Okay, I don't think so.
Correct. We will be bringing back the design contract to council for approval. Right now, we just need to know which scope we're going to negotiate with a consultant, option one or option two.
Wouldn't we have to put that out to bid?
We, we have continuing consultants that this project will be under, I believe the state thresholds went up to seven and a half million this year, so this, this will fall under that. So we will have, I think we have five firms we can negotiate with and pick a most qualified consultant from that, that listing. Or we could put it on the street and open up to everybody if we wanted to.
I would like to do that for cost saving, for potential cost savings.
Yeah.
We can't bid, it's a CCNA, so you select the firm based on qualifications, not price. You can negotiate the price after you pick the most qualified firm per state statute.
I guess what I would like to know is if we can get any money out of the state before we proceed.
Well, I, you know, that, no, that, that would be on the to-do list. You're not going to be able to bank this project on that, but you could certainly have that, you know, in the wings.
Much more difficult to get design dollars from the state if we have a shovel-ready project and we go seek money for construction. That's much more successful when we're seeking funding.
And then if we don't get any money, where will this money come from?
A lot of it comes from, depending on the use of the building, but based on what we're currently identifying, and we'll, we'll work through the programming, but it would come from the, a lot of it would come from the Park Impact Fee Fund, which can cover, what, 70% of the project? The other 30% would come from the capital projects fund.
And I, I think I also talked to staff about the fact that we, we now have the new impact fee for the arts and his, history and culture on commercial.
Yeah, but it's minimal.
I understand, Mayor, but that can also be used towards it. So it's just another tool in the toolbox, as you like to say, right?
Yeah, it's, it's pennies for now, okay?
But we haven't approved that yet.
All impact fees are pennies.
Not yet. We're getting, yeah, you're right. That's in our, that's in our consent this evening.
And that's why I'll be advocating for that as well.
And I, and I, I withdraw. And I withdraw, yes. It certainly would be another tool, a small one, but another tool in the toolbox, okay?
So, I just have to say, I think it's really, really important. This is our oldest building, especially tonight, we had fire prevention proclamation. I know we have a group of gentlemen in our audience who I hope will come and speak during public comment on this issue, as well as people from our historical society. We are a city of 107,000 residents, and our historical society is camping out in a small building in the back of Holland Park, and they deserve better. Our city deserves better. And I think that this is a really good opportunity, not only to have a legitimate historical society, but also a welcome center. We don't have to put the dollars in right now. We can just save the building and work on the dollars in the future.
Councilman Clovis?
Thank you. As a member of the Palm Coast Historical Society, I support keeping this building. There's a couple of other things that I have questions regarding. Number one, do these solutions include, or do any of these, you know, these solutions include a solution for the flooding that occurs there? So whenever we get heavy rains, you know, you're driving down Palm Coast Parkway right from the fire station, and we have to have pumper trucks in the gas station parking lot that's adjacent. Would any of this present an opportunity to solve those problems?
There is a ditch. Some of that is private stone wall system that we are working through as a separate issue that is not part of the city's stone wall system, but we are involved in that resolution. This does have a ditch that goes to the canal, so that is part of what we're providing here. These ponds are new treatment to the area. This is an impaired water body that this goes to, so there's additional treatment that we need to have here above what is the standard treatment here. So this will enhance what's there today. So will it solve the problem? Unlikely, but it will improve what is there.
Okay, and secondly, I would say that I support using this building for additional programming. It is the oldest building in Palm Coast because I voted to knock the other one down as my first, you know, go-around. We built the great community center almost eight years ago now, and that place used to be a bunker, if you remember it. There were no windows inside. It was like a casino. But that, we're a victim of our own success because we built such a tremendous community center.
And we did preserve the original room there.
Heck, yeah.
Where council meetings used to occur.
Oh, yeah.
Do you remember?
I can still smell it almost. It smells like mothballs. But I would also like to warn our council and our future council, be careful with paving over the basketball court that's there. There's a basketball court that is individual there, and it serves a purpose. I play sports at Holland Park and the community center. It serves a purpose there. It's a friendlier environment if you don't have to go play basketball down at Florida Park. So I know we had discussed that in the past, but that basketball court is very important. It serves a role. And lastly, I would say, and this is going to sound super conspiracy theorist, perhaps, but the landscape around parking vehicles is going to change in our future. There's technology that in the next five years, I guarantee you, will allow you to banish your car to go to a centralized parking, and that's how a lot of urban planning is going to look in the very soon upcoming future, is that we're not parking our cars next to these buildings where we're having these events, and we will have cities with centralized parking. I know it sounds ridiculous, but I'll bet anyone $1,000 in this room that will have that. And that is going to really, really, really enhance the ability of our city to remain green. So I'm hesitant right now to knock stuff over to build big parking lots because that whole landscape, as crazy as it may sound, is going to change. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Gombaro, comment on the item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm a requirements guy, right? So the requirement is for spaces, am I correct? I mean, that's why we're having this discussion.
Correct.
But I also think it's important to look at our history, right? And so, could I coordinate a time with you to go visit the fire station, you know, and walk around? I need a...
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I'm the kind of guy that wants to walk around. I want to climb all over it. I want to see what it looks like and understand. And I want to understand the history that we're trying to preserve, because that's important to me. But the requirement's the spaces. And contrary to popular belief, I do have a lot of friends in Tallahassee and in Washington. So, you know, use me as a weapon system. Let me know how I can help you go after these funds, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll introduce you to each one, each member, which you'll, I assume, soon be a member of the Palm Coast Historical Society. That would be wonderful. Additional discussion, yeah?
Well, I'm just curious, are you asking for a little more time on this to get up to speed? Which I have no problem with.
I personally would like some time to go out and visit before I, you know...
Can we push this down to another day?
Well, hold on. So, yes, I appreciate that we have a new council member who received an agenda package in advance of today's meeting. Kicking the can down the road is, I'm certainly not in favor of it. I will absolutely abide by the consensus of the city council. But Carl, again, the direction you want tonight will cost us what?
Well, it costs us $0.00. What the direction tonight will be is we'll then start the process of getting a consultant on board and negotiating a scope and fee to bring back to council for approval.
To bring back to council. So between now and then, you certainly could take care of council member Gombaro's request to get him up to speed on the physical...
We won't spend any money until it gets approved by council, so this next process is no dollars needed.
I'm not opposed to, you know, our agendas are so full because we're negligent and making a decision.
I understand, but I just want to know that we're not committing to anything.
Correct.
Dollar-wise.
Gotcha.
That's correct.
At all, and this decision will be either in our hands before we leave office or the next council.
We'll have costs for an ad, I think, if we go out to the public to seek a consultant, which, you know, that's it.
Okay.
So we're not really making a commitment here?
Yes, you're making a commitment for the design phase.
Right, but we haven't made a commitment on which option.
Correct.
So we have...
Well, that's not correct.
Well, then, why, how's that not correct? One is with the building, one is out of the building.
No, because we're giving, okay, staff has asked us for direction on which of the two options to pursue. To pursue, not to execute, to pursue. So all that's important tonight is that city council members decide on which of the two options are best to pursue to the point where it comes back, and then you'd vote on a cost.
Can we pursue both options, is my question?
We've, what do you mean?
I mean...
You have two options in front of you.
Carl said no, we cannot do that.
We, you know...
To what end?
We could, yeah, right. We could get two proposals from the consultant. What's the cost of design option one, and what's it going to cost of design option two?
Because all we have are guestimates here. I mean, estimates, but they're...
Well, these are just construction costs. Design costs are going to be totally different.
Right.
They will be similar, but the building programming will be a different cost because that's only one of the options.
So, I'm not in favor or opposed of anything here, but we have a new council member who'd like to get up to speed. I think that's important. And if we can pursue both options and then let a future council or us, whichever it is, then push in that direction, I'm good with that.
So I would rather hear about your decision, not the council members. It's like, are you prepared to move forward with this decision this evening?
I'm not prepared to move forward.
Councilwoman Pontieri?
Why aren't you prepared to move forward, Councilman Dango?
No, he's not.
Personally, I know, why are you not prepared to move forward?
Because I'd like to see the cost of both options. It's like, if I do something in my house and I have a couple of different options, I'd like to know.
Well, we have construction cost options in there. What we don't have is the design options, but they're going to be fairly similar for each one.
I mean, we don't know if we're going to get any state money.
You won't know then either.
Right.
So I guess the question, so you're asking for an estimate versus, what, a hard bid?
Well, I'm asking to pursue both options, to come back and give us more solid choices with more solid design numbers.
Well, yeah, the design numbers are going to be minuscule, 10% of the overall construction cost, roughly. So it's really construction costs you're talking about. We have those here tonight.
I'm going to make a motion to approve option one.
Second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second, but now I need to go out to public comment. And I did want, with respect to the vice mayor and his comment, council member Gombaro, I'm of the opinion that you'll have sufficient time to get a look-see, as you had requested, before the hard dollars come before you again for a vote, at which time you would be completely up to speed.
I'm okay with moving forward with option one.
With that, I would like to open up public comment. So I would invite the public to, please now, let's try not to be redundant and come forward with what you'd like to tell us.
James, this is all a result of poor planning, which we seem to have a habit of in this city. You know, we built this thing and immediately, you know, no one planned on parking on the grass. Now you have to park on the grass and have acquisitions for that. This is going to be a mess. I don't want to have to deal with it. I think you should review these plans a little bit more and look them over and see. Because now you're talking about tearing down a building that's practically new, or renovating a building that's practically new. This is just a big mess. Maybe you should put this, let the new council deal with it, but... And you were saying about the arts, Mr. Teresa was saying about the arts, yeah, if we need some money, I think this might be a little bit more important. I'm one of the people who've been turned away several times, not be able to rent a room here because no parking. They didn't have enough parking, so I don't know which option is best. I think you need to take more time to review it and look at both of them and see which might work out better. If you have to put it to the new council, let it do that.
Thank you for your kind. I'm going to direct you, if you would, to our communications in the back just to talk about the age of the building referenced. Please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Kathy Riker Delavsky, and I'm the president of the Palm Coast Historical Society. Later this month, on Saturday, October 26th, Palm Coast will be celebrating the 25th anniversary of our incorporation as a city. On that same date, in 1949, President Harry Truman signed legislation creating the National Trust for Historic Preservation. The leaders of the early American preservation movement recognized the need for a national organization to provide support and encouragement for grassroots preservation efforts. Seventy-five years later, inspired by their vision and advocacy, the Palm Coast Historical Society and other concerned citizens are urging you to protect historic fire station number 22, opened in 1977. Help tell the story of Palm Coast's founding to future generations by choosing option number one of the community center parking expansion plans. Option number one not only creates additional parking for the community center, but also retains a visible connection to our history. Fire station number 22 helps tell the story of a community that was created by an international conglomerate out of a pine-covered swamp and the civic-minded people who gave that community its heart and soul. Fire station number 22 was the first space of operations used for local emergency responders when only a few hundred people lived here in the 1970s. When a new station number 22 is opened a year or so from now and is no longer needed to house fire engines, it could be repurposed to provide the community with a new type of engine, an economic engine. Its highly visible location could help attract visitors and residents to a welcome center and historical society museum to encourage both community and tourist engagement. The Palm Coast Historical Society, created nearly 25 years ago, only months after the public voted to incorporate as a city, believes in the economic, environmental, and civic benefits of saving historic places. Demonstrate that you believe in those benefits too. Allow a tangible piece from our past to enrich our community's future. Choose option one.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker?
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, my name is Alexander Mahler, and I'm the vice president of the Historic Society and Museum. I am here, of course, to support, or actually to follow what our president just brought forward and support option one. But I would like to add something in conjunction with my colleagues here. The design of this project can be done in phases. And the building right now is in use and will not be vacated in a period of two years, I guess. So, right now, the building stays as it is. So, the design of the site, the planning or the design of the site can proceed. And as far as the building is in case, I would suggest to have a more open mind because it's an asset of the city and of the public, and therefore, beside the support of the city, of course, and maybe other sources, we might recruit local grants and philanthropy that can add to the building's development. And we must see the building as an asset that can be expanded architecturally and interiors. So if we have it in the next two years, we will have something that we can promote. If the building is eliminated, we cannot promote anything. And to give you a sense how this kind of museum promotions are done in sort of simple language, we can sell a wing, we can sell a door, we can sell part of the landscape, the new landscape, to different sources. And we can organize that in a different way, whether as a joint venture, or public-private, or all sorts of... So I would encourage us to see that not as a fixed project that we have to finish now, but to look in phases, provide the parking. It's not the perfect, it's not the ideal, it's not the maximum, but it's much better than we have now. And on the other hand, preserve and expand and develop this asset, which is an excellent location. It's an excellent location in the urban scheme, next to the community center, and in the heart of the community, and that's quite significant.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker?
Good evening, Cornelia Downing-Manfree. I come to you to also request that we save this little building. It is the last building that ITT put up that has any significance because it has the history. Palm Coast, since I arrived 25 years ago, has a history and a current presenting of itself as a demolition derby place. Palm Coast has lost so much of its historical development from when ITT originally started the area. We had the Marineland Hotel demolished, the Sheridan and Hammock Dunes demolished, Flagler Beach Hotel, gone because of a hurricane, the Palm Coast Resort, which is where I stayed when I was in process of moving, with the most magnificent oak tree there that was amazing, all gone. The old center at Old Kings and Palm Coast Parkway, that lovely building with the arched windows that could have served as our historical and welcoming center, gone to build a CBS. We've heard a lot of promises in the past and promises presently that have not been fulfilled. Let's keep this piece of history that can be converted. It's not exactly the right place as the entrance of the city, but it has the accessibility from east and west sides of Palm Coast Parkway. And today, also think about the replacement value of putting in a welcoming center or an historical location that is visible to the traffic. Right now, the Historical Society is hidden in Holland Park. People don't even know it exists. The visibility, at least with the use of the community center and its corner location, will have visibility with plenty of traffic users on both of those streets. The replacement value, it's irreplaceable. If we think, if you think about the value of the land alone, as a commercial realtor, you know that the properties are going from $300,000 up to $1 million an acre today, both on Palm Coast Parkway and SR 100. I don't think that we can replace that building in its location without a tremendous cost in the future. Lastly, I think about where I grew up in Washington, DC. I think of the preservation of the White House, the Washington Monument, the Lincoln Memorial. Many of those buildings had gone through fires and flooding and loss of construction when they were putting up the Washington Monument. What if our historians, our citizens, then hadn't saved those buildings? What if our historians, our citizens then hadn't saved those buildings? Let's save our history.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Mayor, Council, excuse me, Mayor, Council, Kirk Whittington. In my past life, I used to be an engineer review officer. I've looked at hundreds of plans like this. My ex-wife was a landscape architect. She's completed thousands of plans like this. I've been involved in the construction process. I understand what they're doing. I'd ask you to strongly support these gentlemen. They know what they're talking about. You asked about phasing a project, add 40, 50% on the entire project. You can't phase a project like this because you're competing against all the other cities. You're competing with Jacksonville, Orlando, Daytona. A crew has to bring in lots of equipment and they have to get it here. And that's the biggest part. If you try and phase it, then they're going to have to bring it in and take it out and bring it in and take it out. That's just going to add more to it. You're also going to have less competition for the job. Contractors are not going to want to come in on a phased project. They want to do it all now. They want to be paid now. It's just a matter of what it is. A lot of people like to speak in favor of using historical structures for a welcome center or for something else as an economic engine. In my 35 years' experience in this, I've never seen a single historical structure be anything but a money pit. They just don't work for people. A very small percentage of your community is going to be interested in historical, but I'd encourage you to look at a democracy as a system of government whereby the majority rules. I just don't think the majority of your people are going to be willing to drive up the cost of a project to save it for a very thin minority of your population. I encourage you to go with what these gentlemen are saying. They know what they're talking about.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
I'm Nancy Crouch. I'm the Chair of the Flagler County Cultural Council, and I agree with everything Kathy just said, but I want you to think of something else. Think about the recent hurricane that took out so much history in the states and the cities around. Why would we voluntarily tear down the last building that this city has historically? And this, and the Historical Society does need a new home. They need a new location that people actually know where they are. So, I vote for option one, and mitigating is very expensive. And mitigating wetlands and preservation areas and just covering it with concrete is going to add to flooding problems in the area. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
I really have to thank you.
Go ahead. Sylvia, I know, just introduce yourself.
Sylvia Bagley-Ci, I live here since 91 and I've seen a lot of history in all these years. And I live just very short distance from the Fire Station 22, and it has a lot of meaning. It is the last building. I totally agree with Kathy Delavsky and the Historical Society. We should go for option one, and there should be a way to gather funds for historical preservations, go get fundraisers, whatever is needed to preserve our last building built by ITT is the only one that is left practically that has to do with our history. And our history is very rich in Palm Coast. And the one other thing I say is this, we have tendency to treat Palm Coast as lesser than everything we have around. Banel has its museum. City of Flagler Beach has its museum. And the largest city in the county and the largest city in some counties around, we don't have a museum. We don't have anything. And we have 107,000 residents here in this county. So, we do deserve a museum because nobody has been really thinking seriously, seriously about now. We have a very incredible Historical Society, all these volunteers. They, they need to be sit on a place they deserve, on a visible place that will attract tourism, will be a welcome center, and will have our history housed and preserved there. So, please, option one. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council members, and congratulations, Councilman, on your new appointment. My name is Daniel Hackney. I'm President of the Palm Coast Professional Firefighters. I stand before you to advocate the preservation of historic Fire Station Number 22. This building is not just a structure. It embodies our community's rich history and the dedication of firefighters that have served in it for generations. Demolishing Fire Station 22 for a parking lot would erase important piece of local history. The historic Fire Station would not only serve as a tribute to the brave men and women who protected our community, but also as an educational resource for residents and visitors, showcasing the evolution of firefighting and the vital role our firefighters play. Preserving this building would foster a sense of pride and connection within our community. Let's honor the past while investing in our future. We urge you to support the preservation of Fire Station 22 for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public? Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening, George Mayo. I'm going to play devil's advocate. I go for option two because the whole idea of doing this was we needed over 100 parking spaces for the community center here. So, if you do this, option one, it says 90 new spaces available. And if you preserve that building and have meetings, you have 30 cars for that, then you really only have 60 parking spaces available. The whole idea was parking. When I think of historic buildings, I come from an old city in Connecticut. Historic buildings were from the 1800s and the 1910s and everything, where you had stonemasonry that you could never replace, intricate hand-yun woodwork that you could never replace. This building is not that. It's a simple building. Our history at most goes back, what, 50 years? This isn't an Art Deco building or anything like that. We need the parking. If you wait further along to do more parking, it's going to cost even more. The thought and idea of saving buildings, how did that work for Flagler County Sheriff's Department several years ago when they needed a, oh, we'll just renovate this building, it'll be fine, until it wasn't, and then it cost way more. Try to fix it up again, spent more money, until finally, they finally got the new office that they deserved. This is something that, yeah, it's nice to think about, it's a historic building, but it's really not. We aren't an old city. We're a modern city. My option two is just raise it, make the parking spaces available that you need now because as we're expanding, you're going, in the future, you're going to even need more parking spaces when then that will allow. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other, yes, sir.
Mark Leo from Palm Coast, just have a quick comment to the last gentleman who got up here. I'm from Connecticut as well. I understand the history in New England, goes back a long way. That's the history to that area. The firehouse here is the history to this area. And if we don't start saving our history to this area, we will not be saving what's needed for future families, future families, and so on and so forth. So, I don't disagree with the fact that the history up there goes back a long way, but it's our history here and it should, it should be maintained.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Patsy Moden, maybe the only one in this room that was here in 77. And I remember the firehouse when we first moved here. It is historic. It's all we have left of that time, and I really hope you consider that. Some things are more important than parking spaces. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. Are there, yes, sir. Come on up.
Actually, he was here in 76.
All right, come on up.
Sorry. I was here in 76. You know, I look at that plan, and I'm sure I wasn't here when it was presented before, but it's a typical architecture's plan that doesn't really think about.
Dr. Johnson, speak into the mic, okay?
Doesn't really think about what's going on. So, where, where are the people from the east going to enter this place?
It's, Dr. Director, the intent of the circulation is you would enter through the end, and then if you can't find parking in the community center, as you exit the community center parking lot, you shoot straight across into this parking lot. So, it's true circulation, traffic circulation was looked at in terms of how the traffic would flow, how pedestrians would flow, was taken into account in the design.
Dr. Johnson, please, address your comments to me, if you would, please. Just to conform to the meeting rules.
Oh, I can't ask them? Okay. Well, the problems I have with that, with the plan is that they're not really thinking about traffic from the east, where the entrance is to that road. I don't know who owns the road, but they're going to come through the hospital buildings there to the east to get into the parking lot if they're going into that parking lot because if this is, if we need that many spaces, then I don't think we ever need that many spaces. I think you'll have a lot of just empty parking places. I have a problem with the fire station taking out the front, where you have, you have doors to the fire station and there's no place to pull trucks in or out. There's a question of a fire, an older fire truck that's available, and that would be a perfect place to have it, but we'd need that front area there in front of the fire station. And they're just, they're taking, they're taking the drive, they're, I don't know, trying to get people off Palm Coast Parkway, I suppose. But I know in our dental practice, Carl came over and threatened to close us off Old Kings Road. And finally, through negotiation or whatever, we, we kept that. But option one, I remember that fire station. My, my father-in-law was the chief there back in the 70s and early 80s. So, I'd like to, you know, do whatever I can to save that building. And I, so I'm, somebody that talked about Connecticut and, oh, that's an old city and we don't have, this is just modern. Well, this is our city and this is our history. So, I'd like to definitely keep option one. And I think we, I don't, I don't know that we need that many, that old second parking lot there to the east is going to be just a, just empty all the time. It's going to just be empty. So, that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Sorry.
Very good. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. I'll come back to the dais for final discussion.
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what we're doing here. We're not spending any money if we go with option one. This will come back to council.
Correct. We will have a, we'll have a fee proposal, come back to council to design, fully design option one to produce construction drawings.
And that will probably be a new council that makes that decision.
Yes.
Okay. So, the question I have then is, let's suppose we turn this building into a, a museum. Who owns it? Does the city own it?
Yes.
Who pays for it? Who may, who puts, who pays the electric bill, the AC bill, maintenance?
Right now, this is a city facility currently, and it's currently planned to stay a city facility unless council chooses to do something else.
So, taxpayers would be paying those bills?
Correct. Yes.
So, I, I just want to make sure everyone understands that, that here we are in a city where we need roads, we need infrastructure, but yet if we went, if we proceed with this, we're going to have to cough up the monthly bills and the maintenance and, and everything. So, I want to make sure folks understand that. I mean, taxpayers should understand that.
Good point. Well said.
So, again, you know, we need a water treatment plant, in case no one's noticed. I'm not sure, again, and being from the Northeast where historical buildings are, you know, hundreds of years old, this is a modern building by all practices and standards. And again, I appreciate what the head of our firemen's union said. I'm a former volunteer fireman, but I, I just, I have a hard time with this. I just got to be honest.
Okay. Councilman Pottery.
So, this decision, I think, is really important, not just for the future of Palm Coast, but for our current residents and in honor of our past residents and particularly our, our Palm Coast history with the fire service. So, for that reason, I just, I think history is so important, and I don't want 50 years from now for us to say, we could have saved a 100-year-old building. We could be looking at a 100-year-old building, but we didn't do it. Because we have to start somewhere. The, the preservation of stuff has to start somewhere, and it should start with this council right now, today. Not for nothing, too, right now, we have the La France taking up a whole bay in Fire Station 21, yet we have trailers, I think, for our confined space team training, sitting outside in the elements at Fire Station 25. So, we could take the La France, put it in, in, take a historical engine and put it, it is an engine, right? The La France is an engine? Okay. And put it in this awesome historical building of a fire station, it would just be so cool. And, and then open, and open up another, a whole other bay for that fire station. So, this also has other benefits that, you know, are, they're tangential, but still benefits. And, you know, to the cost, yes, I get it. It can be, it'll be run by Parks and Rec, potentially, maybe the historic, I don't, I don't know that piece of it. I do recognize that this could be something that the city is going to have to continue to pay for, but I have to say that it's worth it. It's, it's, it's just worth it. So, I, I really hope that the council votes for option one.
Councilman Cliffus.
Yeah, thank you very much. I am more in line with the school of thought that, number one, we can reprogram this facility and that we could do things here that go beyond, you know, preserving a historic building. Because let's be honest, you don't preserve buildings in the Southeast. That's just a problem. It's just the way it is. I mean, one week without power and that place is full of mold. It's not built with stone, anything. The same thing with the community center. I mean, that building, bless its heart, had a great personality, had to go. I think this facility can be reprogrammed to solve a lot of the problems that we have in our community today, but I don't want to emphasize that I'm voting or that I'm going to, you know, support option one in, because it's an old building. And I don't want that to persist forward. It's not that it's just an old building, it's that it does have historical relevance, but besides it being a fire station, if it was just an old ITT building, I don't think we would be having this discussion because all those buildings are old ITT buildings and they were replaced for a reason. But I do support the reprogramming of this facility, and I think it also opens up a couple of interesting opportunities like Councilwoman Pottery said. And it also solves the need for a Historical Society to have a real home, and it allows us to, I don't, I don't want to say, you know, re-annex our facility at Florida Park, but I feel like that facility that you're currently cooped up in could be used for something more park-appropriate and that you deserve your own space, and I feel like this could be that. I would also warn about the Flagler Welcome Center. I don't see this potentially being a Palm Coast welcome center, but most certainly it can be a great asset to our community. But it will require maintenance, and, you know, we've talked about this before with our fire department giving us presentations, but for those reasons, that's why I support keeping this building, not just necessarily because it's an old building.
Thank you. Councilman Gambero, comments?
I'm comfortable with proceeding with option one, given the fact that it's going to come back to us, and it gives me the chance to go out and, and, you know, do a terrain walk, walk the ground, and let you guys explain to me, you know, all the different nuances and, and the team, you know, and our firefighters as well. I want to hear your thoughts and opinions as we move forward, so, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to going forward as long as we understand.
No, no, no. I appreciate your comment.
Where they're at now, at Holland Park, is a horrible location. That would be much better served than some sort of hot dog hamburger stand that could actually make us a buck, you know, and maybe contribute to this cost. It'd be perfect, actually. That was my first thought, the first time I went there, is this really should be some sort of venue for selling products to people playing baseball or walking their dogs or whatever. So, I'm okay with going forward, but I, you know, I would just caution, you know, the next council to look at the cost and see if they can come up with some way, maybe make it a Flagler County Welcome Center and get Flagler County to cough up part of the cost, might be a suggestion.
Well, if I made a, piggyback on your, your comment, I wasn't going to offer this up, but I would put a responsibility on the Palm Coast Historical Society to increase the projection, the membership, the dues, and every other expense, not expense, but every other revenue source that the Historical Society could bring together. Because what I heard each of you say today is you are going to be prouder, bigger, and better for the future. So, I'd like to see that translated into.
Dollars.
A share in some way which the next city council may consider of ownership in this facility. If you feel that passionately about it, that should be a no-brainer. You should want to be a owner-member. Perhaps that is a, a good example of a private-public partnership that we could bring together for the future. It's just a thought that I put on the record for future consideration. And with that, I'll go ahead and call the vote.
Do we have a motion?
Yep, we have a motion and a second.
Perfect, excellent.
Would you like the motion repeated? Let's.
That's correct. It was for option one.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to be that way. The motion was made by?
Councilmember Pottery.
Right.
And seconded by, yes.
Yes. And that was to move forward with option number one as presented this evening.
Are you okay with the dues increase? Due increase, sure. I think also expanding the populace for. I think also expanding the populace for which you guys promote to.
All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, nice work.
All right, now we amount. Forward to letter J on the agenda item for this evening. Ordinance is a second read. Counselor, if you could do me the favor of putting number 10 in for us?
Ordinance 2024-XX amending section 2552, local amendment to fire prevention code relating to burning.
I'm sorry, I was, we're definitely on pile burning, correct? Forgive me. Kyle Berryhill, Palm Coast Fire Department, council. Mayor and council, we're here to discuss the second read of our pile burning ordinance where taking some action to, as you recall, on September 10th, we presented at a workshop. We talked about the history of wildfire in the city of Palm Coast, the relation, the longstanding relationship between Palm Coast Fire Department and the Florida Forest Service. We discussed how it appears that the state statute gives the Florida Forest Service the authority and the responsibility associated with land development clearing, pile burning, and that what we saw was that our ordinance appeared to be out of step with state statute. We had some briefing from our city attorney. And then we brought that back to you on first read on September 17th at the business meeting. And so we're, we don't have a presentation for this today, but we're here on second read for the ordinance cleaning up for pile burning. And I'll take any questions from the main council.
Question, okay. Question?
I have none.
We're just going to hold for a minute. Councilwoman Clufus, any questions at this time?
As a second reading, I do not.
Councilman Gambero, have you had a chance to?
Have.
Okay. No, no, the chief loves questions, so you're welcome to.
All right. I got one for you, chief. What do you call a beehive without an exit?
Um, I don't know, Councilwoman Clufus.
Unbelievable.
Oh.
Yes.
Chief, while we're waiting for a minute, with regard to local control versus county control versus state control, is this an unusual phenomenon or thing where we're usurped by an entity that is not local?
In, at least in my experience with fire services, with provision of, you know, emergency services, there, there are sometimes items that are specifically, you know, delegated to counties. In Flagler County and in all counties in Florida, the EMS, the provision of emergency medical service is, you know, required to be provided by the county. So we actually apply, one of the members who was up for the appointment today serves on our local board, our EMS advisory board. So there are items where the state says, this is definitely yours to do, and then there's items where it's permissible to do. And from what we've seen through this process, I know we're going to, we have opportunity for Ms. Pontieri to give some comments, but from what our observations have been in consulting with both our city attorney, but we've worked pretty diligently with attorneys from the Department of Environmental Protection, from Florida DEP and from the general counsel for the Florida Forest Service, that, you know, we don't have standing to make an impact in this way. But I'm glad to take any questions.
Okay. Councilwoman Pontieri, I think you didn't have a chance to ask a question on this item.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, chief, and thank you to Marcus for the work that you all have done on this. I know we spoke about maybe having the ability to regulate in a way that is not contradictory to the Florida Administrative Code or to the statute. But what I'm going to ask of council is that perhaps we ask for an attorney general opinion on some of the ways to do that. And, and chief, please feel free to speak up, but I, I think that there are some minor things that we can do to either encourage the use of an ACI or, when appropriate, or encourage other formats of, or other ways of getting rid of this material because of the regulatory things that we can put in place that, again, are not contradictory to state law. I don't want our city, obviously, to be susceptible to a lawsuit by a developer or builder, so I would be comfortable getting an attorney general opinion based on some of the things that we've spoken about, just to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can to protect our residents, but in keeping with also making sure we're not violating state law. So if I can just get consensus from council on making sure we, you know, we get that attorney general opinion. I also want to encourage staff, you know, there are certain regulations in place, for instance, the 1,000-foot buffer from any residential, I think it's 1,000 feet, right, from residential that, that no, no pile can be 1,000 feet from any, any residential units. In our approval process right now, and I, I don't know if this exists or if it's something that we can look at when we're readdressing the LDC next year, but do we have something that a builder or developer fills out as a part of that process, a form that just says, hey, this is my plan for disposing materials? So that we can make sure there, there, those buffers are in place, we know exactly when the burning is going to occur, because it's my understanding that essentially they get the permit from FAC and then all of a sudden we have pile burning in our community and we're kind of left out of the loop a little bit because we don't have say in that process. So that might give us the ability to stay more informed as well as to who's doing what in our community and we're not just finding out because residents are upset that there's pile burning going on.
I hear your direction and definitely something that we can seek through some of the pre-development processes that are in place is attempting to determine, I, I don't believe we have influence on how we request from a developer or to say a project is approved or not approved based on this issue, but we can request from them what their intention is to do with this material. And essentially, this is the delta as the infill lots have begun to, you know, be exhausted, right? Forever, we had lots of small vegetation that would go in small chunks if someone built one house. And so now we're seeing, you know, that land that was set aside for development, you know, even before there was a city of Palm Coast is becoming that. And as that occurs, they're doing it in, in a different way. So, yes, ma'am, we can certainly, we have a fire prevention person and that in some of those meetings and I'll make sure that he seeks to clarify what their intentions are so that we can be aware going forward about what parts of our community will be impacted by the, the smoke and the, and sometimes the ash that can be a part of that. We also will continue to maintain a great relationship with the Florida Forest Service. You know, our local banal supervisor has been a longtime colleague of many of us in the Palm Coast Fire Department and we work together and do make an impact sometimes to go to the air current incinerator burning or, you know, sometimes to, he's able to persuade a, a community or a developer, say, hey, you're definitely allowed to do this, but we know this community and they're not going to love it while you do it. And if you chose a different way, that might work better for you. So we exercise all the influence that we can and we'll continue to do so and we'll try to monitor what their intentions are.
Thank you, chief.
So you've asked for a consensus. I, I have no objection to that. My, my question back is, so one, going to the attorney general, I assume that the attorney general would have to look at this on a statewide, presidential basis. So number two, the one thing that has been mentioned here is, you know, there's going to be a cost associated with moving this material to another place, which is going to, you know, impact the residents here, which, you know, understandable and increased development or construction costs, no problem. However, I do find fault with a desire to move a problem to somebody else's neighborhood or backyard, because that's what this is all about. If we ask for the attorney general's opinion, I mean, what we're really trying to do is prevent this burning here, which is, I understand that, but I feel badly that the end game in this is that our pile ends up in somebody else's area and gets burnt there.
Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
Definitely it is prohibited in Florida to do land development clearing, to, you know, create an opportunity where you would be moving a pile and then burning it. You're allowed to mulch it and take it somewhere else.
Okay.
But once you've left, you have to burn it on the site that it is produced on.
So it's just a cost factor?
Yes, sir. So it's just a dealt, it's just a difference between you're allowed to burn it on the site it's produced on or you can haul it away, mulch it, or do other items with, yes, sir.
All right. Good to know. So again
It's an ACI, an air, an air current incinerator, and sometimes that's a better option, sometimes it's not. I mean, we had this conversation, but if it is a better option, we determine it's a better option, then it is a way to change how that material is treated when it's burned.
Okay. What is the advantage, again, of the attorney?
I was just going to add, the cost of an attorney general opinion, it's like, nothing?
Just falls under the normal retainer that you pay our firm and we would reach out and they would submit a response.
Okay. Just curious, thanks.
May I add to your question? Is there a timeline that you could anticipate? I mean, is this like a forever thing?
I do not know of that off the top of my head.
No idea, right?
It depends on, you know, their busyness and how they're going to be able to respond.
So the, the question becomes, is it important enough to, well, this is going to continue anyway, so, do we have consensus with Councilwoman Pontieri's idea to further, further exhaust any, any liability, I guess?
Well, I just want to get an attorney general opinion as to whether or not there's regulatory steps that the city can take as long as they don't contradict the FAC.
With it, okay. Fair enough.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, nor do I.
None.
I'm good.
Good. Okay. So there is consensus that in, in advance of, so the direction is this with council to request that opinion.
Sir, I'll work with the city attorney to help request an attorney general's opinion on if there's an opportunity for us to regulate pile burning within the constraints associated with the Florida Forest Service rules.
Very good. And it would be nice for you to come back just in a comment at a, at a soon meeting. How long they anticipate that answer to take?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you all. All right, now we'll move on to
Mr. Mayor, before we, so if we are going to move that, so point of clarification, I guess I need, Ms. Pontieri, is with your direction is that you want to table the ordinance as is right now until we have a decision from attorney general?
Well, let me ask you this, is there any adverse risk in tabling the ordinance? Or should we enter it and then if, if, if we do find that there is further, there are further steps we can take, we would amend? I mean, is there any adverse risk to just tabling it right now?
So as, I mean, just the same risks as that we, when we brought it up, that we would need to update the ordinance, so.
I would say table it.
No.
So then we would need a motion to table it until we have a decision?
All right, fair enough. Then I would ask for a motion.
I will make that motion.
Vice mayor has made a motion to table and Councilman Gambero has made a motion to second. Any further discussion? Then I will go out to the public for comment.
Yes, George Mayo, Palm Coast. I brought this subject up four to six weeks ago to the council afterward. The chief spoke to me and told me that they would like to stop this, that it's up to the Forest Service has the directional, what you can and can't do. As I said, I was in construction. This is just developers being cheap. They cut down the trees and harvest them and then they stump it out and just burn the stumps. They can easily pay these trucks. You see Ross and all these other trucks for single fam, family lots, they take it out and they have it chipped up and mulched up. They're just too cheap to do this. Somebody's building 150, 200 homes, excuse me, on, on the lots. Taking out several truckloads is not really going to impact the total number of houses, what, what it's going to cost. You're just being cheap. Yes, Ms. Pontieri said they have a thousand-foot rule, but if it's burning really good and the ash is coming off as it's going down, 1,000 feet isn't really that much. That's just right down the street and then you're trying to enjoy your backyard and you're getting this smoke and ash in your backyard. So it's nothing other than these developers trying to get out cheaply, cheaply. They're all making money. Nobody's going to go broke if they have to take this out and, and have it chipped up and mulched. So I urge, thank you to the chief for informing of that. I'd like to see how much we can push and talk to these developers when they're going to do this and say, hey, gee, maybe can you not burn this stuff and just take it out for mulch? You know, I don't think the cost to them would definitely put them out of sorts. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Celia Puglisi in Palm Coast, 691. I totally agree with Councilwoman Pontieri, great idea. It doesn't cost to address this with attorney general because the issue is serious, Mayor. This burn, they burn these piles because of being cheap onsite and it gets to the houses, it affects people's health. It's a question of affecting a person's health and the attorney general should know about that, besides affecting people, elderly children's health. There was a time back then that they had to stop a football game on the high school because they could no longer play. That was a couple of years ago. And it, it is really bad and not only that affect the health, affect the finances of these owners of these houses because they get all the ash on their pool screens, they have to pay to be cleaned up, they get the ash on their homes, on their windows, on their, on their pools. So this is a serious issue and if can be done something through the attorney general will be appreciated. And I know Mr. Berryhill is trying to do whatever he can.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this issue at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. Back to the dais, any final comment?
I have none.
I believe we have consensus. All in favor of the motion to table? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to agenda letter K, which is resolutions number 11. And counselor, if you could read that in for me, please.
Resolution 2024-XX approving a work order for a traffic calming plan as part of the residential speed limit study.
Gentlemen, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and city manager. My name is Vanish Crawford. I am with the Stormwater and Engineering Department. Tonight, we have our consultant presenting the scope and methodology for the traffic calming plan. I would like to start with a brief introduction and, and background. City staff and consultant presented the city council with a speed limit study on June 11th presentation during the workshop. At that workshop, city council's direction was to prepare a traffic calming plan. And in addition, city council also directed the staff to, to, to initiate a pilot study, including the Florida Park Drive and Simran Drive. And at this point, I would point to our consultants to start his presentation.
All right. So I'm going to go over the scope of work that we've prepared by working with staff and what we're here for, to ask your, your approval to move forward with. It would start with a pilot study at some of your residential collector roadways. I'll go over those later on. And there's two roadways per type of traffic calming treatment. We're going to look at the speeds and volumes under existing conditions and then after some temporary treatments are installed. After that, we will develop a traffic calming toolkit that will be something that you could use to sort of have a better understanding of which types of treatments are applicable and work best for which types of roads. You have some roads with different characteristics, so those might lend themselves to, to certain treatments more than others. And finally, I'll pause on this last bullet to develop a process and framework for traffic calming requests. So traffic calming is not something where we're going to have complete consensus. Wherever these get installed, there's always going to be some people who think it's fantastic and other people who think it's annoying. And so it is important to have some sort of a process in place where you can then vet the different requests and move forward with somewhat of a framework. And our intention would not be to be overly prescriptive, we would want to have some flexibility, but at least have a starting point of that process. So for the pilot project itself, there's three different types of temporary treatments that we would be wanting to move forward with. And the first box is for vertical deflection. Those would be something like a speed hump or a speed cushion, right? Vertical deflection, moving people up and down. It's going to slow people down. If you drove in here, I, I went about 15 miles per hour over the, the speed humps that are at the crosswalks on the way in and 15 miles per hour felt pretty good. If you look at the speeds that If you look at the speeds that we're looking at, for this, starting at 40 miles per hour, that's a pretty drastic change. So one of the things that we can do in this pilot project is sort of specify how much vertical deflection, and how, how long those, those, uh, speed humps would be, so we can spend some amount of time trying to tailor them to these specific roadways. Um, we also show the average daily traffic for these with the speed humps and cushions. We're starting with a sort of relatively higher volume roads, and for the next group, those are the chicanes. I'll show you what those look like pretty soon here. Again, similar speeds, up almost 40 miles per hour. That's, that's relatively fast. Here, we're looking at roadways that have slightly lower volumes. And then finally, for the, the simplest and easiest feature would just be some pavement markings. You can make the road travel lanes a little bit narrower, just with some roadway striping, and those actually have some surprising, surprisingly effective results. So the vertical deflection, the roadways that, working with staff, we've selected Florida Park Drive and Cimarron Drive. That was based on direction from the, the previous meeting that, that was previously mentioned here. Some vertical deflection, like speed humps or cushions, again, we would tailor the height and the width of those features. Uh, there's also something called, the, the speed cushion is the one that has sort of a gap between that can, you can set that gap at the axle width of your emergency response vehicles. So that's a nice feature of a speed cushion.
So unlike what we're seeing here, these would actually have a gap?
There'd be a gap in it, and you wanna set the axle width, yeah, at the, at the width of the emergency.
Our fire trucks could shoot between those gaps.
But it's too wide for regular passenger vehicles. So people could try, and you might get one wheel.
Well, they try to do one wheel or another. We've all done it, probably. Yeah.
Maybe.
The mayor admits to it, I think, right?
It's possible.
Mr. Clufus. But, but no, that's good. I'm, cuz I was looking at this picture saying, wait a second, but thank you.
The picture here is just your typical speed hump. Uh, there's a number of very similar things with slightly different names, and it's basically how, how wide they are, how long they last. Like a raised intersection would, would have the same type of effect. It's just, you would put those at intersections and not in the, in the mid-block locations.
And there's potential, we may have a mix, and actually have some of the solid ones, just to see their impact, cuz we're collecting before and after data, just so we can have the overall data in the mix. Cuz these are fairly long roads, so that, that was a thought process, that we may have more than one type on these roads.
So the next one I'll talk about are the chicanes. So these are, if you look at the picture here, all the, all the, and these can be accomplished by using a curb treatment, where you can put trees in for more of a long-term approach. Again, we're starting with a pilot project, so we would use just this sort of candlestick traffic control device that would sort of force people to do a little bit of a curved alignment of their, of their driving, and that makes people pay attention a little bit more, and makes people slow down a little bit more.
Just a quick question. Does it narrow down the road enough to where you have to pause for a car coming the opposite direction?
So, you, you can do that, but typically, these are done where you wanna maintain traffic in both directions, and you also wanna maintain 20 feet for, for EMS, emergency services. Um, and that would sort of limit the application to locations where you have like a T-intersection. Fortunately, your roadway network has a lot of those. So that way, you can kinda, you make people sort of go around through the intersection, but it also limits the amount of space that people are gonna have to deflect. So, um, we'd have, we haven't laid this out yet. Again, this is, I'm here asking if we can get started, so I, I can't tell you exactly what the, the details would be, but part of this project would look at that. And if we were able to only have a couple of feet, then when we come back to you, we'd say like, okay, well, maybe this, maybe this feature doesn't work out well, because it doesn't, we don't have enough space to play with. Um, I'm definitely getting ahead of myself with that. I'm just telling you of something that, that, that might happen as we get to the end. Or maybe they work great, right? But we're, we'll try it out on your particular roads, and then report back. Finally, lane narrowing. Uh, this is something that I mentioned. This has a, uh, this is surprisingly effective, because it doesn't really look like much, and it's pretty easy to do. But if you can have stripes on the edge of the road that keep the pavement width, or the lane width at 20 feet with no, no center line, so 10 feet per direction, um, that actually has a strange, almost psychological effect, where people don't really realize that they're, they're slowing themselves down. It just feels better to go a little bit slower. Um, and I, I did look up what sort of information is available to, to have, better predict about how much of a speed differential you can get, and it's somewhere between 1 to 3 miles per hour per foot. So that's a huge range, 1 to 3 miles per hour per foot, but, um, it, and it really depends on what the before conditions are, and what you're going to after. So, um, but this is the type of treatment that could almost just be a, an easy policy of, hey, if we're ever gonna repave a road, just go ahead and put these stripes down this way, and it'll slow people down. And again, with the sort of psychological aspect of it, it's, it's less annoying to your residents. I, I meant, I mentioned how this can be sort of controversial, or some people really dislike the, uh, uh, speed humps. There's a little bit of noise. Sometimes, if they're right in front of your house, you might not love that. Um, people don't really get annoyed by this one. So, um, it's one, one treatment that you can, you can do that people won't be too aware of, but they will slow down, and, um, will not light up your phones by saying how they don't like it.
Have we, as a city, we've adopted some lane narrowing initiatives before, right? Did we do that on Florida Park Drive, or have that not occurred?
Correct. With Florida Park Drive, when it was gonna be resurfaced, we were gonna stripe it, so we weren't, we're not spending money ahead. That was gonna get torn up. So that was one that was in, on the to-do list, I guess you could call it.
Cool. Thank you. Might have been before this, council. I'm not sure.
I, I've been a, I've been, I've been a traffic engineer in central Florida for about 20 years, and I'm seeing a lot more emphasis on traffic calming in the past few years. So, uh, many communities are sort of trending in this direction, where this is becoming more of, of a concern for several different communities. And we've had, uh, the, the fortunate opportunity to work for City of Ormond Beach, City of Mineola, City of Winter Springs, and City of Winter Haven on different, either toolkits, or manuals, or studies involved in this. And, and we're seeing some sort of similar concerns across a lot of these communities, where, uh, people definitely want folks to drive slower, and, and there's also a concern of cut-through, where, um, instead of, as our, as our arterial network of roads is getting more and more congested, more people are diverting to local roads, and if, if they're going to do that, we certainly want to keep them driving at a, a reasonably slow speed. Um, I'll conclude here with our, with our timeline. Um, if given approval, we would start the traffic calming plan in October. We would work with staff on these temporary devices to see what's available, what could we get implemented. Uh, it's the intention of, of staff to work in-house and actually temporarily install these internally, and where you would not have to hire a contractor to do it. Um, and then that procurement would occur sometime towards the end of this year. Um, that would allow us to do the measurement of after conditions in early January. Um, there is a survey and public feedback element of this that would be led by staff, and then we would come back to you to talk about the results sometime likely in April. And finally-
City staff is asking, uh, city council to approve this resolution.
Thank you. Comments and questions?
Will it work?
Yeah, yes. Looking at these speeds, I, I mean, if you're going from around 40 miles per hour, and you're, and you're adding any sort of deflection, yes. Now, back to that comment about, uh, lack of consensus, some people will say it didn't work enough. Other people will feel like this is too much of a, too much of an impact on their, the shocks of their cars to have to go through this. So, um, yes, it's going to slow people down. Um, now, we're gonna, we're gonna go through and, and identify locations of like where we're gonna put each one of these treatments on each one of these roads, and kinda come through, or work through some of the details. And those can have an impact on how much of a reduction in, in speed they will cause. But, but yes, they'll definitely reduce speed. Um, they generally don't work as well at reducing cut-through traffic.
Interesting. Okay. Um, on the speed bumps, you'll need a vote of the residents on those streets to put them in?
Initially, um, we're gonna do this pilot project to, to just move forward with it, and, um, because it's a pilot project, I'm comfortable with that. If it was not, then I would say we absolutely need to go out and have a, 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 a public involvement campaign. So that's something that would be discussed and, and vetted out more in the sort of policy framework of, of, okay, what does that public involvement look like? But for, for this particular project, um, the direction is to, to go install and measure, see what it's like, then provide feedback. And, and we would also, uh, our intention is to have temporary devices, so if you, if, if you don't want, don't want them anymore, you can take them out.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the time spent. Um, I wanted to clarify costs, because I understand there was a reduction in the cost. Uh, City Manager, if you could inform us of that?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Pontieri. Um, during our phase of getting this prepared to your agenda, I reviewed the item, um, and we reviewed the council direction from your June 11th workshop. And so we've revised, um, a scope with Kimley Horn, and there's actually a reduction in cost than what's included in your agenda packet. We're targeting a subtotal cost of around $58,000, not the $78,000 that's in your agenda item currently.
Okay, perfect. So thank you for that, and thank you for you guys, to Kimley Horn, for working with us on that. Um, I, I really am looking forward to this, because we've seen an increase in traffic incidents in our community, I, a lot lately. Um, and as a lot of our streets don't have sidewalks, I think it's that much more important that we explore some of these traffic calming measures to keep our residents safe, our walkers, our pets. Um, so I'm looking forward to this. I think that the, uh, the timeline is reasonable, and the cost is definitely reasonable, particularly when we're talking about public safety. So thank you for that, and, um, I've got nothing else. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Clufus?
Uh, no, but you, so you'll be aggregating data around this. Will it also include total trips taken on the roads? Uh, so traffic today, here's, here's where I'm coming from. Traffic today on Florida Park is a multifaceted issue. It's, number one, people drive way too fast. We can kind of blanket statement that. But, uh, Hollitt, I'm sorry, uh, Florida Park Drive has unique issues where their houses are really close to the road. So people are speeding, that's not great. But then the cut-through traffic, it's one of the few roads in Palm Coast that's like unintentionally a cut-through road. Uh, will you be collecting data around the total amount of trips taken to see whether the, these have impacts on the cut-through traffic?
Yes, sir.
Understood. Okay. That's fantastic. That's my only question.
Counselor Gomberro, any comment at this time?
I, I think it's pretty straightforward. What's the requirement, public safety? And I, I echo Councilwoman Pontieri.
So I'll reinforce your comment. So, and I, I know you're aware of this. So if we go to our DOT, and then our TPO District 5, I'm sad to say, and this'll go to your comment about the cost, that it may seem like a, a number of dollars to some, but that area that I just mentioned is the most dangerous, deathly area in all of Florida. Number one. Not likely to lose that label anytime soon. So what you're hearing about this evening is, now, most of that obviously is the result of the, um, Volusia, Daytona area, and, and not Palm Coast. However, we still are a part of that region. But my point is this. There is a trend, a trend that needs to be followed towards safer roads, um, to, to protect our residents. So that cost is a, is a, is a pennies compared to the label of being the most dangerous fatal area in all of Florida for traffic. So I applaud your comment about there was a savings, but the, these dollars are, are not only well worth it, but are the future trend. No question about it. So with that, I would open up the item to the public for any comments that public would like to address to me. I see the blue shirt is paying off.
Good evening. I'm Paul at Hatfield. I live in the F section, one street over from Florida Park Drive. Um, my father lived there since 1992. So I've been in this area, and I know the, the traffic that is involved. One of your examples was that Florida Park Drive has nearly 9,000 cars in less than 2 miles per day. What's it gonna take to get some speed humps there today? There are different companies online that I just looked at, including Florida companies, that have a 6-foot strip of a portable one. So you could put it in there for $79, just to see if it works. When I come off of my street to get onto Florida Park Drive, the cars are going over 40 miles an hour, because the speed-
Pleasure.
-thing is right there at Flintstone. And when I see the cars going that fast, I try to sneak in before they come to me, because they're coming from Palm Harbor. Um, when we had the sewers fixed on Florida Park Drive, we had no traffic and no speeders. It was wonderful. So they're using the cutoff from Cimarron and that different vicinity to get through, um, to Palm Coast Parkway. The point is, we need to have something before April. This has been going on for at least two years that I have been witness to your meetings and to discussions. And Mr. Carr has been here for, what, nine, 10 years, coming to the council, talking about the speed. We need something done today. Please think about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Was there another member of the public? Yes, sir.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I just wanna appreciate y'all for taking this under your wing. It has been long overdue. The traffic, uh, condition there on Florida Park Drive, just the, the number of cars, plus the speeding. Uh, from the traffic study, there were some, there were some vehicles going 50 and 50 to 55 miles per hour, in, in the 30 mile an hour zone. So we really needed, we really do need the help. And I wanna thank you for taking that under your wing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker?
I moved from Palm Court 21 years ago, because I was quarter of a block from Florida Park Drive, and I saw it coming. It is really bad for my friends that are still living there. And, uh, it's a danger just for people that go there, walk with their dogs. Or when I go and visit, it's, it's difficult to get in and out. It's the worst street in Palm Coast. So, you said it's the worst in Florida? I don't know, but it's the worst in Palm Coast. And it needs those humps or some type of solution, uh, soon, because tragedies are gonna happen. They have accidents every day. I was contacted by a friend that there was an accident these days, and her next-door neighbor lost her mailbox again. So, the, the street is narrow, but the traffic is horrible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment to me on this issue at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais. Is there any final comment?
Just one clarification. Um, for the pilot study, it says January 2025. When do you all, and I know it's going to somewhat depend on the procurement, but when do you all anticipate being able to put in these traffic calming measures, and for how long will they be installed during the pilot study?
Yeah, our intent is to procure them in November. Obviously, lead time and, and following procurement, whether we have to piggyback contracts. So we're gonna begin that process here shortly. Our, our goal is to get them in as soon as possible, you know, hopefully before December, but ultimately, they would go in in December. So come January, they're in place, and then we can start, um, taking feedback and doing our survey after the holidays, and the roads are being full and used, you know, to normal use with school and session, those sorts of things.
That was my next question. Are we going to make sure that we're monitoring these while school is in session for a certain amount of time?
Yes. The, the follow-up study's gonna be in January, when they do the follow-up counts and, and analysis after school's back, and-
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, with that, I don't believe I called-
Didn't it comment this way? I was-
You want another, another comment?
I was just gonna say, if we really wanna talk about solutions for cut-through traffic, I've said it before, kinda jokingly, but the solution to cut-through traffic is to cut Florida Park in half and to put two cul-de-sacs there. That's the end-all solution. I know that sounds crazy, but I just wanna throw that out there.
You have a cost on it?
I could probably have it done in a week.
Counselor Gomberro.
Good, Mayor, thank you.
Whose house do you take out?
Um, I would, I, I would accept a motion to adopt the resolution calling for the approval of the tra, traffic calming plan. Councilman Clufus has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Pontieri has made a second. Is it-
We're talking about the cul-de-sacs now on Florida Park Drive?
Is there any further- Is there any further discussion on the motion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I can, just reading the room, there are some young kids here and I believe they're here to support the disc golf because I can read their shirts and I think that's what it says.
What number is that?
I believe it is 14.
Do I have consent from city council to rearrange the agenda and move to 14 next?
Yes, please.
Okay, 14. Resolution, counselor, read it in.
Resolution 2024-XX approving the Park Impact Fee Credit Contract with Marabella Apartments Florida LLC for the design and build of a disc golf course facility.
All right. Well, good morning, Mayor and City Council. James Hurst, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'll let Rick introduce himself because I think I'll butcher his last name, so I apologize for that, Rick.
Good evening. I'm Richard Piccatacci, landscape architect for the city of Palm Coast.
So, today's presentation is the proposal of an park impact fee credit agreement for a new recreational facility and specifically for a disc golf course facility. So quickly, here is our agenda for tonight. We have the background of the, a little bit of the agreement, goals and objectives we identified in the Parks Master Plan, some feedback we received from the Comprehensive Plan, description of the donated land, operations and partnerships with our local Flagler County Disc Golf Club, the course layout, and then just actions, council's actions. So, as part of the Whiteview Multi-Family Project, Marabella Apartments LLC, the developer of the project, donated land to the city as part of the public benefit requirements of the MPD. So, once staff was kind of aware of this gracious donation of land to the city, we looked at our Parks Master Plan, we also looked at the Comprehensive Plan, and we did an analysis of looking at community feedback, looking at our social pinpoints, looking at our goals and objectives, which I'll get into next, to kind of recommend that we develop Flagler County's first disc golf course. Currently, in the room, we have Flagler County Disc Golf Club, but they do travel to Volusia and St. John's County quite a bit to play disc golf. So, this would be the first one within Flagler County. So, our county-wide Parks Master Plan, we had two goals that we identified that in this, for this project, and three, four objectives we identified. So, the first goal was to invest in current infrastructure and address aging facilities. And then within that objective, within that goal, objective 1.5, develop additional outdoor recreation facilities and amenities. And then in objective 1.7, explore opportunities for non-traditional sports and recreational opportunities. And then we looked at goal 2, improve and enhance programming and outreach. And in that objective, within that goal, we had objective 2.3, again was to explore opportunities for non-traditional sport and recreational opportunities. And then also in objective 2.7 was partner with service providers when possible to develop program service to meet demand and trends. The Imagine 2050 Comprehensive Plan. So, we did get community feedback, focus on a variety of recreational activities and actions to improve our amenities here. And disc golf course was identified through resident feedback, both in our county-wide Parks Master Plan and our Imagine 2050. And again, we, this would be the first golf course, disc golf course within the county and the city. So, here is the land that is being donated to us. It sits between Pine Lakes Parkway and Whiteview Parkway along White Mill Drive and then hopefully with the development here to the west, a little bit to the west here. So, it is a nine-acre piece of land that was donated to us. So, then we looked at our operations and partnerships. So, once we kind of got this land, we talked about disc golf, we did the analysis and, you know, we did notice the community feedback. And our first thought was, we've had our Flagler County Disc Golf Club come to a number of our public meetings to discuss disc golf and the needs within this community. So, we met with them in February. We went through and we talked about MOU agreement. So, part of that MOU agreement, we will be discussing with them, will be to provide programming for all ages at the disc golf course and then also help us with maintenance as well. So, this kind of, a great example of kind of this MOU agreement is with our current mountain biking group agreement we have at Linear Park. They are sober. They maintain the trail for us, they do some programming for us. There are things that we're not really, you know, we're not subject matter experts in that mountain biking or disc golf. So, we're looking towards this group to help us provide programming for all ages and help us with our maintenance. This would be open to the public, so there'd be no mission costs and our hours of operation would be sunrise to sunset. This great graphic here is the course layout. Before I go ahead, there will be limited clearing. It looks like a lot of clearing, but no, we want to preserve the tree canopy and do just kind of clearing of the underbrush. Disc golfers, they could probably tell you this, but they do love their trees. So, we would have an 18-hole disc golf course. It would be low-maintenance amenity. And then we would do limited clearing and preserve, make sure we preserve in the tree canopy on that lot. So, here is a couple of examples of some disc golf courses. This is actually taken from Holland Park in New Smyrna Beach and their disc golf course. As you can see, quite vibrant tree canopy, just really underbrush. You can see it's used quite a bit, which I'm sure would happen at ours where, you know, they keep their vegetation down and the walking paths and anything like that. So, those were a couple of examples we wanted to provide. And then just lastly, we would like council to approve the contract with Marabella Apartments LLC. And then we're here for any questions that you might have.
Questions from city council members?
So, basically, this isn't really gonna cost us?
Yeah, this is, the agreement will outline that the developer will build this course for us, yeah.
Yeah, build it for us, maintenance very low, they'll help out with it.
Yep.
Doesn't look like there's a lot there.
Yeah, no.
Fine, good.
Thank you for this. I think this is a really good opportunity for the community. My questions are, one, what is the timeline for construction?
Rick, do you have that?
No, we put a hold on the design, the actual, this is the conceptual design that we're presenting tonight. And we have consultants who were putting the project on hold until they were sure that council passed it this evening. Then they're gonna move full steam ahead with the design. So, I would assume maybe two months for the design and get started in the springtime and maybe finish time by summer.
I just want to make sure that we're not waiting for any phase of the development for this to be completed. In other words, I want to make sure that the finishing of this park is not dependent on COs or anything of that nature in the actual development itself.
Okay.
The applicant is available to answer questions if we can have him come up.
Perfect.
You didn't bring your discs.
You know, I almost did. I thought about that and I thought, no, that's gonna be over the top and I shouldn't do that. My name's Kurt Wimpey, I'm with Alliance Engineering on behalf of the applicant, Marabella. They do not have any phasing in mind, so they're getting ready to start construction on the full project. And they want to go very quickly because it's a nice amenity, not only for the city, but for their project as well. So, they're ready to go as soon as we get the go-ahead.
I understand they might be ready to go. What I would like to see in the MOU, if possible, I don't know if it's appropriate in the MOU council or if it needs to be somewhere else. I would like to know that this amenity is going to be available for our youth prior to us depending on the development itself. I don't know at what, and maybe this is a question for staff, or you might know. I don't know at what phase usually impact fees are paid. But to the extent impact fees are paid prior to a development actually breaking ground, that's when this should start as well. Because, again, I just don't want this to be held hostage while a development is in its process of being developed. So, if we can make sure that that occurs with staff, that would be great.
Certainly, I think that could be tied into, you know, COs for the project or something like that. Somehow, we can work with staff on that, certainly.
And then I do notice that the amount of the construction that we've estimated is less than what the impact fees would be. And I'm okay with that conceptually, but my question is, can we add a few extra things to this that I don't think would be too expensive, but would add quite a bit of quality to this park, such as maybe some drinking stations?
Yeah, we, part of this will be restroom facility, parking spaces, shade structures, drinking facility will be part of that on that public restroom facility.
Okay, I want to make sure we have plenty of drinking fountains and then also maybe some dog stations. Because if this is an open space, there should be dog stations.
Oh, for sure.
I also had a question about interconnectivity of this park with anything surrounding the area. Are there trails or any other parks surrounding the areas that we can provide interconnectivity to now or in the future?
So, Pine Lakes Parkway has that trail along there. I believe Whiteview has a sidewalk as well. Ralph Carter Park's just a little bit down the road as well. So, there is some interconnectivity.
So, yeah, so I would say that in the design of this, we need to make sure we have that interconnectivity. Because as we worked on the Parks Master Plan, that was definitely a, maybe could have been the number-one goal that people asked for, I don't remember, but I think it was pretty high up there. My last question was regarding the MOU itself. The upkeep and maintenance is going to be the responsibility of the Flagler County Disc Golf Club? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then what about insurance and liability?
That would be, as part of our MOU agreement, we'll require that from the club as well.
Okay, and then we would just, an additional insured?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
I just want to make sure we're clear on that. It's still going to be a city park, so if we do assume some risk there as well.
Okay, so then.
There's an injury they would submit, they could submit to the city.
Like if they tripped us?
They could submit a claim, they could submit a claim and that would go through our insurance, which is the Florida League of Cities.
Okay, so we will have costs from our Parks and Rec Department for this facility then?
Yeah, the city, the city would incur costs, could incur cost.
Well, we're going to, if we have to pay for insurance, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then for the upkeep and maintenance, are we confirmed that we are not paying for upkeep and maintenance of this park?
So, a future MOU with the Flagler County Disc Golf would be on a future agenda item for you. So, once the, we're getting closer to the end of construction, we would bring that finalized MOU to city council for approval.
Okay. We've asked for quite a few things here tonight. I would like to see those added in and have an updated presentation before I'm comfortable approving this. And I also want to see it, I want to know a timeline. I want to know when this amenity is going to be available for our kids and our adults, I shouldn't say that. All of our folks who play this sport. Jason, do you have anything further on that?
Yes, ma'am. I pulled up the agreement and in section 2.2(c), it says, "No building CO shall be issued prior to the completion and acceptance of the disc golf course facility by the city."
Perfect. And so, do we know, do we know when this is anticipated to start then?
Construction of the project is underway.
Okay.
So, they're gonna have to complete the golf course before they can CEO a building, but they're doing site prep work already.
Okay, so can we just get an update then when you guys go back and, so that we know we've got the interconnectivity solved and we've got the dog station solved? And then I would like to know, I know Councilman Clufus, you brought up cooling stations and things like that at other parks. I think it would just be important to make sure we've got adequate, especially this is, it seems like there's a lot of, I don't play this sport, but people will be running around and it's not, you know, it's not a sedentary thing by any means. So, just make sure that we've got adequate drinking available for our residents, so.
For the interconnectivity, this is kind of a landlocked park though, right? I mean, we definitely have interconnectivity. If you can get to the sidewalks, you can get to a bunch of great places over there. But as far as direct interconnectivity, I'm not sure I follow on that.
Yeah, so right there on the right side of that exhibit right there is Pine Lakes Parkway. You've got the multi-use path immediately adjacent to the course and we figured we would probably put a pad right off of that.
Sure.
Into the course with like a bench.
Yep.
To have some seating area there. And then that White Mill Drive sidewalk comes down and the sidewalk goes back to the parking lot. So, it's completely interconnected with.
I feel like it is kind of already interconnected as is, is my perspective.
Yeah.
Just because if you get to the sidewalk like you're saying, you can pretty much get to anywhere over there.
Yeah, surrounded on three sides by sidewalk path.
That satisfies it, yeah, I just want to make sure it's there.
Okay, perfect, yeah, excellent, okay.
I did have an insurance question though. Our insurance costs could increase if we're sued, but does our policy cover something like this or will our policy go up?
Yes, we have, we would have a policy on this particular park.
So, we have to do a separate policy?
Similar to how we handle all of our facilities.
Any idea what those policies might run?
I do not have that.
That'd be nice to know. And how many parking spaces? I mean, it looks like a small amount on this map.
Yeah, I would say 20 to about 30 parking spots, yeah.
That'll be enough to accommodate all of these players, you think?
Sunrise to sunset, I think. As you see disc golf courses, they come and go, kind of like normal park, playground park, things like that.
Okay.
Awesome, I think this is a great idea. Number one, I'm a huge proponent of disc golf. My best friend, George Opelka and I, we used to work in the building right around the lake here and we were responsible for the five or six goals that we had put around the lake. So, if they ever drain this lake out there, there's probably about 10 discs that I have thrown in this lake trying to clear it.
You got it.
It's brutal, yeah. Never really got any good ones either. But I think this is a tremendous project, I'm a huge fan of it and I'm so inspired by the amount of youth that are playing disc golf. That was really, caught me off guard. Same thing with pickleball too, it's quite eye-opening. But I'm a huge fan of this project and I'm glad that it's tied to completion of the project. It seems like they're already pumping money into this, so things are moving along. And I'm glad that we're gonna be able to bring a facility like this to Palm Coast because people have been going to New Smyrna Beach and also north for too long.
Councilman, any questions?
No questions.
Very good. Then if there are no other questions or comments, I'll open this discussion up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment at this time? Will you be the spokesman for the group?
Yes, I am. Unfortunately, no. My name is Craig Dewin, thank you. And we're all here to show our support for the, for the disc golf course on Pine Lakes Parkway and White Mill. We just want to say that disc golf is very un-invasive. We want to leave all the trees, just take out the underbrush and create some fairways. Disc golf is such a great sport, it's a great sport for any gender, any age. I played disc golf in South Daytona with two brothers that are in their 80s and it's just amazing to be out there playing disc golf with them. And currently, we have to leave the county to go play. We have to go to St. Augustine or Daytona or New Smyrna. So, it would be awesome to have our own course here. These are my grandkids, they live not far from there, so they'd be over there every day. And they're actually awesome disc golf players, by the way. In fact, the other one over there, he beats me all the time, I'm getting tired of it. Well, yeah, we'd give the kids in the neighborhood would be, just give them a great place to go. And disc golf is very inexpensive, you can buy a set of starter discs for 20 bucks. Comes with a driver and mid-range and a putter. And of course, the courses are free. So, it's just, it's awesome and it's awesome to see this coming around. You know, we go out of town and we buy gas, we buy lunch, we buy drinks, we buy sodas. All that money would be coming here back to Flagler County, which I think would be great. And people will travel. If we build a course that looks like it's gonna be such a great course, I know a lot of people are gonna travel here to play it. So, they're gonna come and spend money in Flagler County. And most of all, it's just a lot of fun. Disc golf is probably the best sport I've ever played and it's a lot of fun. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Elena Hagee and I'm gonna be talking about the disc golf course around the corner of Pine Lakes Parkway, about one mile away from my house. Me and my family love disc golf and I would love to have a course near our house so me and my best friend and her family can play disc golf together. A lot more, a lot more. Instead of driving like 45. of driving like 45 minutes to an hour to go to another course, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment? Yes, sir?
You mentioned the youth. Disc Golf is a very useful sport. The actual number-one player in the world right now just turned 19 years old. It's like any other sport. I moved up here. There's a lot of people, we all retired from the city of Corregables down Day County, and moved up here because this is my city. Anyway, so what we're planning on doing is catering to youth, having youth activities. We're going to set up teaching clinics where they can come out on Saturday and Sunday and play. All these kids here are in a homeschool group, which, there's a lot of kids in the homeschool group. They're going to be coming, they're actually going to get community service hours for helping maintain the course, just keeping it clear and clean and stuff like that. And when I retired nine years ago, my thing that scares me the most is slowing down. And Disc Golf doesn't let you slow down, because the bad thing about it is, you go out, you play it, you're not very good at it, it's fun, but it gets in, you get addicted, and you can't stop playing. Now, it's nine years later. It can be cheap unless you really, but it can also, never mind. Thank you, guys, for considering this. We really appreciate it. And the kids are the ones who have benefited.
Thank you for your comment. Another speaker?
Good evening. Paulette Hatfield in the F section. I just, I'm, I think it's great to have parks and all sorts of entertainment for kids. I have no problem with that. Mr. Danko says, "Oh, it's not going to cost us anything. It's costing us over a half million dollars in credit," for what I understand, "that the developer gets." Is that not true? Or am I confused about that? $539,000? So it's costing us money that the developer is giving us in kind to have a frisbee park. So my question is, how was that credit determined? How did you come up with that particular figure of giving that much credit to the developer? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and I'll have staff get with you that for some additional information.
It's based on a price per unit of development.
Based on the impact...
All right, when you get a chance...
To have to go to park and recreation anyway.
It's an impactly credit.
Right. When you get a chance, follow up with the resident, if you would. Any other members of the public like to comment at this time? So I'll come back to the DA, so any additional discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Sorry, I just have one question. The construction, who from staff will be overseeing that, and can we make sure that we stay in touch with our stakeholders during that process?
I'll be the project manager. And Eric Gabel from Capital Group, he'll be involved also for the hardscape end of it. And I'm sure James will be involved also.
Yeah, if we could just make sure we keep in touch with these folks during the process, so that they are our stakeholders. So I think it's important that we keep in touch.
We were involved with them from the onset.
Perfect.
We met with them last January, and they gave us their enthusiasm, and it got a little bit contagious. And we did a couple of rough sketches, and we emailed them back and forth, and they commented, "It would be better if you did this and did that." And we molded it together to get to this concept, and everyone seems to be happy with it.
Great. I'd just like to keep that going, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any final? I just make one quick, okay, one quick comment that, yes, of course, there's an expense. I would also say that there is no less expensive way, none, to add another park venue to the city of Palm Coast. This is a pittance of what any additional park space might cost. This is a luck of the draw in terms of a developer being willing to donate property. There is an expense, there's no question about it, but you could not add park space to the city at this rate in any possible way. So just to take the sting off that just a little bit. So with that, do I have a motion?
I made a motion.
Well, what was the motion?
The motion was to approve.
To approve?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Danko, a second from Councilman Pontieri. Any other discussion? Nope. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you. And you have your direction. And if you would follow up with the resident for me?
I will.
Chain rattlers out there.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll go back up to respect the agenda to item number 12. Counselor, if you would read that resolution in for me?
Resolution 2024-X approving of guaranteed maximum price contract amendments, Florida power and light easements, and a work order for intersection signalization design services related to the Fire Station 22 and 26 project.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Alvin, once again, Eric Chievo, with the architect for the Stormwater and Engineering Department. I'm pleased to present to Council an update on the progress of the new fire stations and approval of the construction contracts for each. Staff presented to Council for approval in February of this year, the design and pre-construction services contracts for various fire station projects, which included the replacement for Fire Station 22 and the new Fire Station 26. These projects are part of the five-year capital improvement plan to address fire department response times. Construction documents were completed in August of this year. To give Council a brief update on the design, the layouts for both Fire Stations 22 and 26 are primarily the same, with the only deviations being the inclusion of the battalion chief suite and a training tower in the plan of Fire Station 22. The programming phase for the facilities involved extensive planning sessions with multiple design charades that included the architect, contractor, fire personnel, and various city departments. The result of this collaboration is a 10,000-square-foot prototype plan that incorporates all of the current and future needs of fire services in efficient, modern facility. The ingenious clustered layout of the sleeping quarters allows for a smoother, more rapid call deployment. Firefighter health and safety was also another focus of the design, with particular attention being given to the post-event decontamination process. The final products are fire service facilities that will serve the needs of the city well into the future. As with the Southern Recreation Center, the prototype for the new fire stations are creating an exciting new vernacular for the Pacific architecture of Palm Coast. The prototype design is a modern expression of some primary elements of historic Florida architecture, with large expanses of glazing to provide the natural light needed to support the vehicle bay functions, exaggerated overhangs for solar heat gain reduction, and wraparound verandas that provide visitors a welcome entry into the facility. The construction management firm obtained bids this summer and established guaranteed maximum price contract amendments for each station. The new fire stations are funded through fire impact fee funds and general fund appropriated fund balance, with Station 22 utilizing $3,498,120 in offer funds, and $5 million in state fire marshal grant dollars for the construction of Station 26. Throughout the process, the project team worked diligently to incorporate cost-saving measures into the design to ensure cost savings, to ensure the facilities were designed to be efficient and functional and planned and economical in the choice of materials and finishes. Additional savings were achieved through the concurrent scheduling of construction, savings in the CM general conditions, subcontractor administrative and management, economy and bulk purchase of materials, consistency in subcontractors, and increased efficiency in the design team's construction administration services are all benefits that will be gained from the concurrent construction schedule. The projects will enjoy a reduction in cost of just over $1 million by constructing Fire Station 22 and 26 concurrently. The facilities also benefit from an energy usage standpoint, with the solar photovoltaic system generating an ROI of approximately 10 years. With contract award in October, construction for Fire Station 22 can begin upon receiving permit approvals in January. Fire Station 26 will commence early thereafter in February. Council actions are for the approval of the guaranteed maximum price contract amendment with Wharton Smith for Fire Station 22 in the amount of $10,896,0252, and project expenses in contingency in the amount of $138,000. Staff is also requesting approval of the GMP amendment for Fire Station 26 in the amount of $10,496,824, and project expenses and contingency in the amount of $198,943. Staff is also requesting approval of the ETM design services fee for the signalization of Seminole Woods Airport Commerce Way intersection as a release to the Fire Station 26 project in the amount of $149,536. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, let's go down the row.
Go ahead. I know you love stuff like this.
Vice Mayor, I think your first question was going to be, is this in the budget?
Well, we haven't, well, we had to transfer, this is what we had to dip into reserves for.
Yeah, no, no, but it's part of...
Because we didn't get say appropriations.
But it's part of our budget.
It is. It's part of the budget we approved. My issue isn't really with the main costs here. It's with this design service fee for the signalization. The $149,000, and then I'm looking at the actual deliverables and the items that are not included, including temporary traffic control plans. To me, that should be included in this. Permitting, the stormwater improvement design, there's a lot of stuff that's not included for $150,000 in design work. So I don't know, this isn't my world. I'm not an engineer. This is what you guys do, obviously. But when I'm looking at what we're spending on this project as a whole, the fact that we use this firm, England Tims or Thims, I don't know how you say it, but we use them a lot. To me, this is a lot of money to pay on top of everything else for this design, just for the signalization that doesn't include these other items that, have we budgeted for them elsewhere? Are they already in the budget? Or are we going to have to, are we going to see another contract in the future for these items?
Yeah, a lot of times with the permitting, this will be, it's more than a signal of design, because they're going to be looking at the turn lanes as well, whether they need to be extended, and they're also going to be doing a speed analysis study on whether, based on the speed of the road, may determine the length of the turn lane. So there's some additional analysis in there. The MOT portion on these types of projects where it's not as complex, we put it on the contractor for them to produce an MOT plan for us to approve before they go to construction. So rather than pay the engineer to come up with, and then the contractor says, "Oh, I don't want to do it this way and change it," we just put it on the contractor for them to write an MOT plan that we sign off on as part of the bid. And the permit with, even if it was a lane extension, there should be no permits necessary. Even with lane extensions, those usually fall under permit exemption. So we don't foresee a need to obtain a permit on this particular project, and they can submit for a no permit determination.
So in this list of items that's not included, which for Council, I'm looking at page 161 of the packet, of these items that are not included, do we anticipate there being extra costs that are going to be before this council for any of these items?
No.
Okay.
The MOT would be part of the construction bid. So there would be, he may add some cost to produce that plan, but it's going to be cheaper to have the contractor produce it than the engineer.
Okay. So I would just kindly relay to them that this is an expensive project, obviously, that Council will be looking at very closely moving forward when it comes to the fiscal part of it.
Understood.
I would have summed it up a little simpler, but I'm glad you did it. It's kind of like buying a real expensive car and discovering there's no rich Corinthian leather seats in it. I mean, you kind of expect all the bells and whistles, and, you know, all for one price, and not some extras to be tacked on later. So I think that when she said Council will be watching this closely, I'm sure she will be.
Yeah, we'll make sure they don't ask for any extra costs. We'll have a full-blown package that's ready to go out to bid for construction.
Thank you.
No, you've answered the questions. I won't have to pontificate. All good.
I do have a question. So you said that you guys would sign off on these additional costs and would not come back to Council? Is that what you said?
Well, not sign off on the additional costs. What we, on these simple MOT, I say a simple MOT project, it's not as complex as some of our project-specific MOT plans that we would do. On this one, we'd ask the contractor to sort out a draft, how he's going to do the construction, how he's going to do his lane closures, or what he may need to do to install the new traffic signal or perform his work. So he'd submit his plan, review his plan, and approve his plan before he'd actually go do the work. So we would have to sign off on what MOT plan he wants to perform to complete the work.
So how does Council keep track of this if he's signing off on it?
What's that?
So how does Council keep track of those expenditures if he's signing off on it?
No, there'd be no expenditures. We're signing off on a plan.
On a plan?
We would be coming to Council with a construction contract for approval, and that would just be part of their bid, would be to produce that plan as a submittal for the city approval.
And that would be an excellent question for your city manager.
And then also, how contingency costs would work if we were to go past contingencies, then you would come back to Council, make us...
It would be part of his base bid cost, it would be part of his general overhead of what he needs to do to complete the projects, like producing ass builds and whatnot as part of the project.
Okay, I'll be watching. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'll open this item up to the public. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment, come on up, Patrick.
Good evening. Mayor, Council, Patrick Giuliano, Vice President, Palm Coast Professional Fire Fighters. Sorry, my counterparts had to go home. They work tomorrow, and you know what to say about B-shift. They turn into pumpkins after 10 o'clock. Thank you for taking a look at this, and with your approval, this is going to be a significant investment for our fire department. The last time we built fire stations was 16 years ago, when we built Station 21, 24, and 25. And before that was Station 23, about 20 years ago. So this is a really significant investment. It's putting a fire station in Seminole Woods that has long been, the response times have taken such a long time. And this has been a real good team effort between city staff, some of our firefighters, our chief administration, with coming up with a plan that works, and how does it become functional, and how does it get the best bang for the buck. So we appreciate you looking at this, and everybody's hard work going forward. If this is approved, we're having a ground break-in next Thursday, October 10th, at 9:00 a.m. at the site of Fire Station 26. So please come out and help turn a shovel and break ground. And we look forward to these new fire stations for the next 50 to 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else from the public want to comment at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public comment. Any final discussion from City Council?
Just a funny anecdote. My husband's B-shift. So not only did I say he's not in the best department tonight, he's now been called a pumpkin.
All right, then I'm going to ask City Council for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve, and I have a second from Councilman Clufus. Any further discussion? Then I think I'll go ahead, and all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. You have your direction. We now move to K13, our final resolution this evening. And Counselor, if you'd read that in for me?
Resolution 2024-X approving project and construction expenses per the interlocal agreement with Radiance Community Development District, and approval of easements, utility credit agreement associated with the Old Kings South Utility Improvement Project.
Okay. Good evening. Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering Department. So I'm here today to present to Council an update regarding the Old Kings Road South Utility Extension Project. So the presentation is going to begin by giving an overview of some of the major items that have been completed. The Old Kings Road South Utility Extension Project was initiated per the settled agreement from 2007. There have been several other items that have been completed, such as the Florida Government Utility Authority Agreement, the Radiance CDD Agreement, and approval of design permitting expenses, as well as the construction bidding. We'll go over each of these items in more detail on the upcoming slides. We will start by discussing the utility service area south of SR 100, referred to as the Old Kings Road South Utility Area. In the early 2000s, the city and Flagler County were in conflict over territorial area service rights regarding water and sewer. Both parties wanted to service the areas' water and sewer needs. By 2007, the city and the county agreed to what is known as the Settling Agreement for Service Territories. The county would service the most southerly portion of South Old Kings Road, refer to the graphic on this slide depicting the service areas. One main item to point out within the agreement is that it requires the city to install a water main to provide bulk water to the county. In addition, the city entered into an annexation agreement with Builo Creek LLC for the annexing of approximately 798 acres. This agreement required the city to provide water and sewer service to the property, and stipulated... This agreement required the city to provide water and sewer service to the property and stipulated... Apologize. And stipulate the city will design a permit and install the water line services as required per the settlement agreement. Since 2008, the city has been working diligently, expanding a tremendous amount of effort to collaborate to implement the utility line extension project. Around 2017-18, the county considers offering the service territory to the city as the county attempts to get out of the utility business in the area. The city does not accept the system at this time. The county then transfers ownership of their service area and facilities to the Florida Government Utility Authority, referred to as FGUA. After the utility transfer, FGUA reaches out to the city to begin discussions regarding a mutually beneficial bulk service agreement. FGUA and the city entered into a bulk water and wastewater treatment agreement dated October 20th, 2022. Some of the highlights of the agreement for the city are, it satisfies the city's obligations of the settlement agreement for the city to provide water main for bulk service. It satisfies the city obligations of the annexation agreement with Bureau Creek LLC. It also provides an environmental benefit by reducing or eliminating the small package treatment plants in the FGUA service area. The parties would be able to reduce wastewater affluent discharges into the outstanding waters of Bureau Creek. It provides a collaboration of the city, county, and FGUA to work together in a cooperative fashion for the betterment of the community as a whole. The city receives the service territory right for the properties that were annexed into the city after the settlement agreement was signed. And the city also receives property for a future wastewater treatment site. Its location will be able to service existing and future residents in the southern portion of the city. This begins the process to satisfy the city's wastewater capacity needs. Funding in '25 has been included to begin a study for this future facility. The city FGUA agreement included a concept plan for utility system improvements. The figure on the slide shows the final design layout of the utility lines. The blue line shows the proposed water main extension. The green line, the wastewater force main extension. And a red box in the bottom right is the proposed master lift station. The design included an alternate for reclaim water main extension that has similar layout to the forced main extension. Basically, the city would fund the improvements that are built within the city limits, and FGUA would fund those improvements within the FGUA service area. We will discuss more of the funding obligations and reimbursement on upcoming slides. So the FGUA agreement allows for the city, in its sole discretion, to transfer its responsibilities to design permit, solicit and award competitive bids for construction of the utilities extension project to another public entity, such as a community development district. The city, FGUA, and the Radiance Community Development District, CDD, entity with land interest for a portion of land within Old Kings Road subarea, have agreed that the city and CDD can enter into this inter-local agreement for design and construction of the utility extension project. The city and Radiance CDD entered into an inter-local agreement dated May 2nd, 2023. In addition, on May 2nd, 2023, city council approved city expenses in the amount of $1,123,726.49 associated with the design and permitting for the utility extension project. The slide also depicts the FGUA-approved design and permitting-funded portion of the project of just under $395,000. So today's agenda item is associated with obtaining approval of agreements, easements, and costs associated with the construction for the Old Kings Road South Utilities Extension Project. These will be reviewed in more detail in upcoming slides. This current slide also identifies a tentative timeline for completion of the project, including approval of FGUA project expenses that is on their meeting agenda on October 17th. Construction is anticipated to be completed by the end of 2025, with the signing of easement and transfer of property to the city to follow shortly thereafter. Due to the limited right-of-way width in the congested area of Old Kings Road, South SR100, there's a need to obtain easements along both sides of Old Kings Road in order to install utility lines. The city has been working on obtaining easements for many years. There are currently eight property owners for which easements were obtained along both sides of the roadway for almost the entire length of the project. Easements provide a benefit of the city utility by not having to pay for relocation costs if any roadway work is performed, as the lines will be outside of the road right-of-way. The details of these units will be reviewed in upcoming slides. Many of the easements also provide an added benefit for the installation of a 15-foot pedestrian path. The Florida Sun Trail Program was established in 2015 and receives an annual allocation from the redistribution of new vehicle tag revenues. DOT distributes the funds through a competitive solicitation, request for funding. The city's Grand Swamp Phase 2 extending from Grand Swamp Trailhead south to Lehigh Trail has received FDOT funding for the design and is the city's intent to pursue Sun Trail program funding for construction. Flagler County has applied this year for funding from, from the Sun Trail for the portion from SR100 south down Old Kings Road to the county line. I will now begin by reviewing the easements associated with the eight property owners. This slide is for Bureau Creek LLC property owner, consisting of six easements, which provide much of the easement area necessary for the project. This easement is a three-party easement between Bureau Creek LLC, the city, and Radiance CDD. The easement provides rights for utility lines and ability for a 15-foot wide pedestrian path. The easement has an expiration date of January 1st, 2029, for the utility line to be installed and accepted. The easement contains requirements to provide numerous utility taps for future development use. These taps are included in the project and are part of the construction cost. In addition, there's a connection fee agreement that will need approval that includes provisions to provide a credit of 50 units at a current value of $377,000. This amount was determined based on the easement's area of 11.748 acres at a value of $32,500 per acre. This slide is for the school board of Flagler County property. This easement is a two-party easement between school board of Flagler County and Radiance CDD. The easement provides rights for utility lines. The easement has an expiration date of January 1st, 2026, for the utility line to be installed and accepted. The easement contains requirements to only allow the construction of the utility lines between June 1st and July 31st. In addition, there's a utility easement purchase agreement in the amount of $114,000 plus any applicable fees and taxes. This slide is for the Flagler County property, consisting of three easements. This easement is a three-party easement between Flagler County, the city, and Radiance CDD. The easement provides rights for utility lines and ability for a 15-foot wide pedestrian path. The easement has an expiration date in January 1st, 2029, for the utility line to be installed and accepted. This line, this slide is for the Iroquois LLC property. This easement between Iroquois LLC and Radiance CDD. The easement provides rights for utility lines. The easement has an expiration date of January 1st, 2029, for the utility line to be installed and accepted. This slide is for Venture 8 LLC property. This easement is between Venture 8 LLC and Radiance CDD. The easement provides rights for utility lines and it has expiration date, as the others, January 1st of 2029. And this slide is for the FGUA property. This easement is between FGUA and Radiance CDD. The easement provides rights for utility lines with an expiration date of January 1st, 2029. And there's a slide for the City of Palm Coast property. This easement is between the City of Palm Coast and Radiance CDD. The easement provides rights for utility lines. The easement provides rights for the lines and ability for a 15-foot wide pedestrian path with an expiration of January 1st, 2029. So to summarize, this slide outlines approvals needed from city council regarding easements for this project. Bureau Creek LLC, approval for city to negotiate, finalize, and execute easement and connection fee credit agreement that provides 50 connection fee credits. Approval for inclusion for providing utility stubouts for the construction project funded by the city. Then we have the school district of Flagler County, approval of $114,000 cost plus applicable fees and taxes for easement purchase agreement. The Flagler County easement, we're seeking approval to execute the easement. The City of Palm Coast easement, which is not shown above on this slide, but we're looking for approval to execute the easement with Radiance CDD. And then all easements would be seeking approval for easements to be assigned to the city from Radiance CDD upon completion and construction. And then there's approval of $96,000 allowance to cover legal, survey, miscellaneous fees, and closing costs. The budget to cover costs associated with necessary, easement's necessary for the city portion of the project is $250,000 plus the 50 connection fee credits. So next, we're gonna talk about the, the construction. The Radiance CDD bid the project as two separate bids. One for the master pump station that received five bids, and one for the utility work that received four bids. Upon a review and evaluation by the Radiance CDD, they recommended approval to award the FGUA master pump station and FGUA utility work to Hazen Construction in the amount of $4,662,336, and to award the city utility work to Southern Underground Utilities in the amount of $8,455,795. An alternate for the reclaim line installation in the amount of $4,506,749 was not accepted due to budget limitations. However, a portion of this line may be installed utilizing contingency funding if available. This item is to also seek approval for city construction costs for the project in the amount of $8,455,795. Per the utility credit agreement, Bureau Creek LLC should reimburse the city for wastewater force maintenance reclaim water pipeline extension improvements necessary to service Bureau Creek. And these will be accomplished by way of line extension fees that will be applied during the development and utility service agreement with them. The Radiance CDD advertised construction, engineering, and inspection services, and they received two qualification submissions. Upon review and evaluation of the qualification submissions, the CDD ranked RS&amp;H as the top-ranked firm and proceeded to negotiate a scope and fee, which was reviewed and approved by the CDD at a cost of $320,000. This item is to also seek city council approval in the amount of $320,000 for CEI services. Additional project costs for the city include the Radiance CDD management fees equal to 5% of the construction cost, equating to $422,789.75. In addition, there'll be other project expenses, such as potential govers, tortoise recollections, permits fees, and other costs, as well as a project contingency at roughly 7% of the construction cost for a total of $601,415.25. This item is to also seek council approval for the management fees, miscellaneous expenses, and the project contingency in the amount of $1,024,205. So in summary, the total cost for the project seeking city council approval is $10,050,000 with $4,760,402.13 coming from water capacity fees, and $5,289,597.87 coming from wastewater capacity fees. I take any questions at this time?
You just have a lot of big numbers tonight, Carl.
Questions?
Kind of a...
They're all $10 million each. Right.
I'll let you deal with her.
What is the half-million-dollar management fee?
As part of the Radiance CDD agreement, inter-local agreement we had with them, for them to manage the project and oversee the project, that there's a management fee built in of 5% that was approved by council previously.
Okay, and is that standard? Is that, I mean...
I believe that's what we paid on the one for the Citation Road extension. I believe it was the same 5% fee as well.
So this would effectually wipe out our impact fee fund? That's what I'm looking at on the source, on the Source of Funds worksheet? Is that not true?
Well, for this particular project, those, we, we've budgeted $10,050,000, and that's what we're seeking to use. So we're seeking to use all the funds budgeted for this project. We do have a contingency in there of roughly 7%. So we want to do some of the reclaim, like where we're boring under a road or under the school property. We only have one chance to do that. We may install those now, so we can at least get to a certain point on the roadway and use some of that contingency for that. But we'd obviously try not to use those dollars if we don't have to.
For the credits, I read somewhere, it says the city will receive reimbursement for a portion of the wastewater line and reclaim line if installed. Do we know what that looks like?
We haven't performed, now that we have bids, we have to go in and assess those costs, because the city would pay the upsizing costs. So we'd have to evaluate what, it's, until they do their development and know what size pipes they have when they come in, then we would know what those initial fees are. Like, say they need a 6-inch line to service their community, and we're putting in, you know, 12 inches. So we'd have to pay the upcharge from 6 to 12. We don't know specifically what line that is to service those needs, but we can, we can run some scenarios now that we have the bids in and have those numbers available.
Okay, and do we know if we're going to have capacity to be able to service this once it's installed?
This project, the DEP permit tied to this project is for the homes, existing homes that are serviced by the FGUA station that is gonna be dismantled, and that property is what is gonna be donated to the city. I believe it's 110 homes is what will be the initial project that, the permit that's tied to this project. There could be future development in, along this corridor, but they would all have individual permits that would get applied for during their process. But right now, the only DEP permit tied to this project is 110 homes.
So is that a yes? We will have...
110 homes, we spoke with utility. They are fairly confident that we have the capacity to take on those 110 homes.
Is this serviced by wastewater treatment plant one right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct. We plan on diverting flows to two, you know, early next year. So by the time this is done, we'll have diverted some flows to two, which would then free up some capacity in one.
Okay, that's my, you understand my concern on the capacity for one?
Absolutely.
And what will the associated costs for diversion to two be that we have to do in order to accommodate this?
I, I don't have those, I believe some have already been completed. I know there are some more to do. I don't have those numbers available. I can get those to you. I know utility and operations have been working on those, some of those items separately or independently from, from engineering. But I will check with them and get back to you.
Okay, and then my last question is, it says the city, this is in the summary for this item. The city would acquire the current property which FGUA utilizes for the treatment facility. Site would potentially become the city's future wastewater treatment plant, three site, and would enable, enable future wastewater service. Why does it say potentially? Do we not have plans for that? And if we don't, what would be the benefit to the city of this annexation?
We, it's highly likely it will be a wastewater treatment plant three, because we can divert a lot of flows, because we're going under 95 and tying into Citation Seminole Woods. So all those flows southern, south of SR100 can be diverted to this plant site. We, it makes sense that be a site. I don't know why it would not be. It's our full intent that this would be a plant site. That's why the, it was part of the agreement to have that property donated to the city for us to have a plant site there.
Okay, my last, sorry, I know I said that was my last, but the last one is, is there anything else? Based on the capacity issues with wastewater treatment plant one right now, which we're in dire straits with, is there anything else, if we were to not approve this agreement right now, maybe go back to FGUA and say, hey, can we negotiate something based on the capacity issues that we're dealing with? Is there anything else that we could use the CIAC monies for that would help with those capacity issues?
In wastewater, it would be limited, because wastewater treatment plant one expansion is, the costs are way more than these funds. We wouldn't be able to add capacity. Water, it's much easier. We can add some wells in, add some more water source to that project. Wastewater would be more difficult to add capacity. Water would be much easier.
Okay, so we couldn't divert funding from this to something else, combine it with funding that's already set aside to help the wastewater treatment plant issue?
It would be less loan money we'd have to take, because we had more cash that we could put towards the project. But it would be, you know, it's not, it's not much, you know, we're talking about the overall cost of the project. That's not much money.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Carl, for the presentation.
Thank you, Carl, for the presentation. My question would be, well, I guess a couple of points real, real quick. This would obviously open up some opportunities for commercial development in that area, a future potential commercial development.
Yeah, correct. And I believe the Bureau Creek and their annexation, it specifically talks about some commercial development.
Yep. And that, I just want to make sure council knows, that's a big portion of this. The other part would be some good positive environmental impacts and things along those lines. My question that I had for staff essentially is, do we have the money to really be doing this? With the rate study that we weren't able to get approved for the increased water rates, is this the time to be doing this, investing in our system in a way that, you know, definitely, in my opinion, is a good way to go if we have this, this money here. But with knowing the shortcomings that we're going to have in our existing utilities, is this the right time to be doing this? Do you have any feedback on that?
Well, these, these are definitely capacity fees, which we did increase. So that's what dollars are being, the utility rates aren't being used to pay for this project. We're using capacity fees. We are going to get a lot of those capacities fees back by any potential development here. You know, obviously, Bureau's already on the hook for reimbursing the city for the lines to service them. Yes, there'd be some maintenance items, you know, when you have a system, but a new system is going to have less maintenance than an older system at that point. Yes, timing is everything ideally, you know. This would be later on, but this has been a longstanding project with lots of city obligations, and will this time come again? You know, will this developer, you know, walk away? Will there be 20 property owners we have to negotiate easements with in the future? You know, we're not sure if this opportunity will come around again or when it will come around again for us to proceed with the project.
Understood. Okay. So I just wanted to offer that prudence to our council.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thanks, Carl. Appreciate the brief. I'm familiar with this from my time on the school board, these types of projects. So yeah, thank you for the summary.
The only other comment, this is a tough one. I get it. Your questions is your questions. It is tough. However, I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you my feeling. I've heard everybody, the public, the candidates, the applicants, us, talk about economic development and talk about the need for new sources of, of commercial and perhaps light industrial and other things. This corridor has the potential to do that. The problem is with projects that are involved with economic development, you do have to look far out. The other thing you have to look at is, like Carl said, if you deal with 20 property owners possibly again in the future, if the wheel comes all the way around, the cost that you see there could be a multiple of what this is. Now here comes the hard part. So do you pay the piper now at a lesser cost? Or do you roll the dice in the future and pay 10 times that? How strongly do you feel about our need for economic development in particular? If the costs were significant enough to affect the improvement of our current utility system, I would have no, I wouldn't say all this. But there are pittance of what it costs, what they would throw off to, to help the current utility structure. So I'm along the line of thinking that at some point in time, we have to bite the bullet and say, okay, we do have to plan for the future, and the properties and the zonings along that corridor offer us that opportunity only if these utilities are in place. They don't offer it if it's not in place. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. If there are no other comment, well, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this issue? Yes, sir?
Mayor of City Council, my name is Chris Couch. I'm the FGUA East Region Manager. I've been working on the project for FGUA for about the last three years. Been dealing with...
Do, do us a favor, and for the public, tell us what the FGUA...
Florida Governmental Utility Authority.
Okay.
So FGUA is the acronym we typically use. Been working with city staff for the past three years through negotiation of the Bulk Interconnect Agreement, getting that all ironed out, dealing with all the developers, all the CD issues and the easements. And it was kind of a mountain, kind of moving a mountain to get it kind of where it is today. And I'm glad, you know, the item is presented to the city council for consideration today. And FGUA is looking forward to our partnership with the City of Palm Coast throughout construction of the project, and then as an interconnected utility with the city. We're also interconnected with the City of Palm Coast through our Beverly Beach System. So this will be the second interconnected with the City of Palm Coast, and we're really looking to the future with our partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the, for the gentleman?
I have none.
If there are no other members of the public to comment on the issue, I'll come back to the dais for some final discussion.
My final thoughts are, I just wanted to lay those things out there, but if the staff is directing us that this should be something that we should go forward with, then I think eventually we're going to have to pay the piper. And maybe you made a great point, we could have bought our water utility for $30 million back in the day. Instead, we paid $80 million. You know, these costs do incrementally go up pretty fast, and I just want to let you know where I stood. So thank you for the presentation, Carl.
Councilwoman?
The, the master development plan 2020 draft, is this already approved? The, the draft that's in here for this land? It's on page, it's not, there's no page of the packet, but 30 of the Meridian...
Are you looking at comp plan piece, or?
No. Hold on, I can let you know. It's not as a part of the presentation. It's in the Meridian appraisal group backup data. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
That was appraisals. They had appraisals done on the land. That must be for the Bureau Creek LLC. They had some conceptual plans done by an engineer, and we worked, our engineering team, or the one that CDD hired, worked with Finley, I believe it was Finley Group, on where the, that development would be. That could change when they actually formally come in, but they had some preliminary engineering plans done, yes. But that's not saying that's what's approved.
Right. So I, I hear what you're saying about commercial development, but we don't, I mean, how is that land zoned right now?
I believe in the annexation agreement, it talks about some commercial development in that annexation agreement, if we go back to that initial annexation agreement.
Right. But, but I'm trying to figure out...
I believe it's more closer to SR 100 are the more, but I don't know what the zoning is. I have to defer to planning for that.
Yeah. I see, I see Jason coming. I guess my other question related to this would be, and I only ask because we are paying $10 million for this, is this susceptible to being taken over by Live Local because we will not receive the same tax benefits or impact fees if so?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, Jason DeLorenzo, Chief of Staff.
Yeah. Is it zoned in a way that is susceptible to Live Local? Any developments for Live Local?
Uh, no, not at this time. It's currently zoned Flagler County Agricultural.
Okay.
So it is with, it's within the city. I think Councilmember Clufus might be able to fill in some of the gaps, but I believe it nearly came, nearly made it to city council two times. Once as a DRI, and at the last moment, they withdrew because the state rules for DRIs were going away. So they withdrew the DRI in 2019-ish, 18, 19. An MPD was going to be considered, but it was withdrawn, I believe before a presentation to city council, a hearing. It may went through planning board. Sorry, I can't remember. But yes, there was a full development plan that was part of that. I couldn't find the document you were referring very quickly there. I was trying to look back at it.
If it's just a draft, it's irrelevant anyways, so...
There is nothing approved.
So will, will a separate annexation agreement come back to us then?
No, the annexation agreement's been approved.
Yeah, it was approved in, I think, 2009.
So then a rezoning would have to come back.
Correct.
Do we have any idea when that would be?
No. We spoke with the landowner last week, and he didn't indicate a timeline for that.
Okay.
That, that, and again, it would, you know, a new plan would probably come forward, but there was a significant amount of non-residential on the west of Old Kings Road and east of I-95 in that kind of strip on the northern portion. So south of Old Kings Elementary School, all the way down to, and maybe, I think, all the way down to the former landfill, and then even the parcels below, I think, were south of that, which is in the general area of Citation.
Okay. Thank you.
Turn those into pad-ready sites in the next city council.
That's going to take economic development investment.
It will. Trying to help here. All right. Very good. Then if there are no other discussion here, I'm going to ask for a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Vice Mayor. Any additional discussion? Go ahead, give me a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Althing?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. With that, we'll move to Section L on the agenda, which is our consent agenda, and I'll ask city council members, are there any particular items?
I just want an explanation, and I asked Lauren about this...
Well, okay. Tell us which one.
Before council started, but we spoke briefly. I just, just refresh my memory on number 17.
On number 17. City Manager, can you help us with 17?
I want to make sure I understand it fully. I know we spoke briefly, but...
Number 17 is the agreement with FC3 for this, for FC3 to manage the city's cultural art grant process. So instead of city staff taking applications, judging those applications, we would have an agreement with FC3. We would send those reimbursements to them, and they would manage that grant process.
And, and the reason for this?
We're supporting FC3 and their initiatives, and it takes city staff out of the process.
Okay. That's, that's all I want. I just didn't remember it. I might have not been here that day. I just don't know.
And, and Vice Mayor, I've been the liaison to FC3, and it's been a joint city-county initiative, and the, the burden on city staff has been a lot. So these folks have been putting together the program. It would be their focus. And having been the liaison, I, I was swimming upstream with it as well, but I, I think it does make sense. I'm, I'm in favor of it based on my experience having attended the meetings.
I just drew a blank on it.
Got it.
But I, that's why...
I mean, I wish it was more. I mean, it's, it's not a big number.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question. Sorry. Just on 15. In the scope of work for the Phase Two project schedule for Taylor Engineering and the canals, it says that the Phase Two includes a pre-application meeting, and I know that's with a bunch of the agencies to figure out what we'll need to move forward, a canal evaluation, and then presentation for city council. Will, will each phase of this scoping also come with cost estimates for what they're looking at in each one of these phases?
I do believe we have that scope, that scope of services broke down already. And if you remember, your previous direction on the, on the Saltwater Canal Initiative was go budget and do Phase Two, and then come back to us with those findings before we look at dredging, actual dredging costs, right? That was a significant investment. So this is just the pre-application, design work, et cetera.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that, for instance, when they go to these different agencies and we figure out what we need from each of them, there's also a dollar figure connected to each one of those findings?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda at this time? Seeing no one come forward, let me close the public comment, come back to the dais.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
The Vice Mayor is in a hurry.
Second.
I have, I have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve, a second from Councilman Gambaro. Any final discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Kaylee. All right. With that, we move down to final public participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on any item that was not previously discussed in this evening's agenda? There is one. Okay.
Ed Fuller, Palm Coast. The reason I stayed behind, I want to congratulate council for any appointment of new city council member. And Honorable Gambaro, I wish you all the best. I pray for you, and thank you for serving our country. And I hope you, you do the job that I know you can do. And I appreciate everybody's patience in appointing a person of your caliber. So I wish you all the best, and may God bless you. Take care.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, I will close public comment final for this evening's meeting. Back to the dais. Discussion by city council members matters that were not on the agenda, and let me just add a courtesy. I think Councilman Gambaro, you had suggested that there was something you wanted to bring forward.
There is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So through the application process, I had the opportunity, and I know it's late, but I think it's important to address, I had the opportunity to meet with members of the business community, you know, even my neighbors, others, that, that's, that really vehemently expressed some concerns with regard to the charter amendment. Okay? And I, I absolutely see the intent of what the charter amendment is trying to do, but I'm just deeply concerned about it. And I think it's also important that our citizens understand clearly what they're voting for as we, as we continue to look at how to raise revenue to cover down on some of our long-term costs. And so, and personally, and, you know, Councilwoman Pontieri did a really good job with our questions with regards to the charter amendment, where, you know, I shared that I think there should be a broader debate as to whether or not our city council versus the people should have the final say on how much the city borrows for the future. And I'm concerned that a loss at the ballot box could hurt the next city council's ability to readdress this issue, which is something that Councilwoman Pontieri committed to during one of our last meetings. So, so my, my position is, is that I think this charter amendment requires a reset. And as such, I move that this council nullify the charter amendment so that, you know, what's currently on the ballot in November is passed on to the next city council to, to be able to rewrite the language. Happy to do it with you, Councilman Pontieri, and, and make sure that what we present effectively needs, meets the needs and the intent of this initiative. Happy to discuss.
So Councilman, just so I'm clear, you used the word nullify. I'm not sure I understand the definition of that.
So right now, the charter amendment's on the ballot, right? I've got it right here. Right? Came in the mail. There's no turning back on this, right? It's already been pushed out. But it is my understanding that we can vote to nullify the results of that, of this ballot amendment.
Are you asking me? Okay, cool. Appreciate you asking that question. So is this council, I would advise you not to take this up because this is at the point of no return. As Councilman Gambaro has said, ballots have gone out, okay? So the election process has started. So it would be my advice that this cannot be nullified. In case law research, the only way that this can be changed is by a judicial decree, is where a judge would intervene, and the judge would find it not valid. Just a little background on here, this is governed by our city charter. Our city charter said that, hey, we want to change our city charter, we need to put it out for a voter referendum. First, we have an ordinance. That ordinance was passed at two reads, and then it goes out for a vote by our city residents. This has already been done because now it is in the hands of our electors. And if this city council decides to nullify this vote, then it could be looked as that we are interfering with the election, whereas it is now in the hands of the voters. The only other option that I would advise is that, is that a judge can have a judicial decree that can find it not valid. This council cannot null... it not valid. This council cannot nullify the vote.
Our supervisor of elections agrees with you. She says she can, she can, this, just because it's on the ballot, the language could be removed, the vote could not count. She's already confirmed that in the media, to The Observer, Flagler Live, and she has no problem doing that. So my understanding is, you're making a motion here. Is that correct, to remove this amendment from the ballot?
Yes.
It doesn't count. I will second that motion.
But aren't we actually unwinding, already codified?
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't, I understand, and I appreciate the magnitude of the situation. I'd just be brief, but I think since we've gone past that point of no return, the previous business meeting would have been the last opportunity for one of the members on our council who had voted yes to make a motion to undo their vote essentially. There's a word for that. It's just late. I can't remember it.
Even Mr. Duffy told me...
A motion for reconsideration.
A motion for reconsideration.
He told me weeks ago, Mr. Duffy, that a new council member who had not voted on this could come in and make a motion on this. We had a phone conversation.
We did have a phone conversation, Vice Mayor. And what I said is, I would look into that matter for you. And I said I would need to research it more. I did not give you a yes or no answer, and that is affirmative, how I responded to you.
Well, that's your legal opinion.
Okay.
But he's made a motion. I've seconded it.
Hold on, hold on. So I have a motion, and it has been seconded. So is there additional discussion? Now, council has given us information with regard to what the liabilities are. I think your, your, your reference to the supervisor of elections was incomplete. The supervisor of elections did not indicate that there was a liability with regard to, would it be the court?
Yes.
With the court. Her...
Liability. That's what I'm confused about.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
What would be the liability?
So there is also another side of this, that there, this could create more litigation, where a voter or someone, that the same as the pending litigation, could bring a lawsuit because it could be interpreted that we are now interfering in the election.
I don't think that makes any sense. I think it's very obvious to me that, that, that we have a new council member. He's made a motion.
No, no. I accept the motion, and I've accepted the second. I'm just trying to help you understand. So...
I'm going to call it a order. It's an improper motion. And, and here's, there are so many issues with what's going on right now. First of all, you already made a motion that I seconded that was not voted on, and that was the last opportunity to do that, to unwind council's previous action like Councilman Clufus already said.
It was voted on.
So my, my call to order is that, Mayor, this is not a proper motion before the council. Number one. Number two, if we...
Well...
Hold on, because this is important, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Well, let's go with the first one first. Okay. You said it's, it's not a proper motion because?
Because the only per, the only people that can unwind a council action that was already taken are those who voted in favor of that action, and it has to be done at the next business meeting.
Okay. So that's important. Good. Next?
Next. And this is more important to me, from a fundamental issue. If we, let's say, okay, let's just do a different hypothetical. Let's say that we voted to put something on the ballot, same subject, but in the perfect language that we wanted. Okay? And it's moving forward to the ballot, and then somebody says, after the election has already started, I want to come in and usurp what council has already voted on, and take away good language on a ballot, and interfere with an election that way. And we voted in favor of that. That is clearly voter disenfranchisement. Just because we think that a lot of the voters don't like this, doesn't make it right to interfere in the, in the election. Because then, in the future, when something favorable is on the ballot, the same thing can be done because the pendulum always swings to the other side. So if we interfere in this election now, future council can interfere in a, in a more favorable, or what we think is favorable, election in the future. And I am certainly not okay with that.
Okay.
So I, this is, this direction, this action should not, it's not legal, in my mind.
All right. Hold on just a second. So Councilwoman Pontieri makes a point with regard to the validity, if you will, of the motion from the new council member. He was not a part of the prevailing party at the time. So just help me with our adherence to Robert's rules here.
So in your policies and procedures, Councilwoman Pontieri is correct, that it says there that if you have a motion for consideration, you're supposed to bring it within that next meeting.
Okay. So then, I think I may have misspoke. I don't know that I formally accepted. Well, I did accept the motion because I accepted a second as well. How do I unwind that? Doesn't require...
The chair, you, you do not accept it as a, as a valid motion.
So I'm no longer going to accept it as a, as a valid motion, and that negates the second as well. Okay? Councilman Gambaro, I'll give you a chance to, you get an opportunity to see this again.
Yes. Yeah. And, and I look forward to doing that.
Councilman Gambaro, I'm, I mean, not to demean, but we are getting close to the end. We may need a consensus if we're going to go extend past 11:00.
Consensus to 11:15?
Yes.
We have consensus to 11:15.
I mean, I look forward to working on this again. You know, if it doesn't pass, I'm just, the, the voices that came to me from all over the city on this issue was, was pretty loud, and it was, it was, they want us to, to not take a loss, right? And they want us, I mean, to my next door neighbor, while I'm taking out the trash, everybody was, was very clear and vocal on this. And so I thought, as a new member, I could. But I'm still the new guy and learning, and that, and that's fine. But I, you know, regardless of what happens, I still think the language needs to be rewritten down the road. And, you know, I look forward to working with the next council to do that.
Very good. Councilman comments?
Welcome aboard. I'm late on comments tonight due to time. Awesome.
Councilman, Vice Mayor Danko, any final comments for this evening?
No, I just think that, I think our legal counsel is wrong once again.
Okay.
And I think we could make this motion, and we could approve it, and we could save ourselves the embarrassment of having this go down in flames. And more importantly, we could be done with the lawsuit aspect of it. So...
Okay. I appreciate your comment.
I just really think that it is just, again, it's a circle of stupid if we continue to just run around in it. Time to end this thing.
Councilwoman Pontieri?
So Councilman Gambaro, I look forward, if this doesn't pass, to working with you on new language. And if it does, I look forward to you supporting a resolution to put limits on our borrowing power. I want to end things on a more positive note. We have these new cool free little library stations that I think are awesome, particularly with a little one that I read to, and have run out of books to read to him, by the way. So I will be trading in books. But I want to recognize the Eagle Scout that was a part of this because he's a youth in our community that went above and beyond and did something pretty cool. So there's a Stephen Wilcox that worked with Parks and Rec, I believe, on this. He's one of our Boy Scouts of America from Troop 400 out of Banel. So Stephen, thank you for your contribution to this, and thank you to Parks and Rec. I think this is super cool. So there's three stations, one at the community center, one here at Town Hall, and then, is it the Southern Rec Center, City Manager? Is the other one?
Yes.
Okay, Southern Rec Center. So definitely take advantage of that, and hopefully, we'll see more and more people reading in our community.
Thank you. I just have one. I'm going to challenge, not challenge, I'm going to ask each one of my fellow city council members to give some thought between now and our next meeting next week, how we can help those incredible number of folks that have been so devastated by the recent storms. I know that Flagler County is, but something that the city might consider doing. You have not just people have lost their lives, you've lost entire communities, which is quite unprecedented. So I would certainly be proud to know that we had, you know, had a discussion and thought about what we might do. Because by next week, roads will begin to be open, and there will be a chance to, to be helpful to folks. So I would ask each of you to think about that for, for next week, if you would. And with that, Councilor, any final comment?
I do request a shade meeting for pending litigation that we have, October 14th at 3:30 PM. City council, I request you to be there, myself, the city manager, Trevor Arnold, and Nikki Bossever. They are our litigating attorneys for this.
Do me a favor, let the city council members know what the, the subject is.
The subject is going to be dealing with Holland Park. So it'll be regarding that matter. And, yep, I'm calling it onto that one. So we have scheduled it for your calendar. So if there's any questions, please reach out to me.
All right. With that, I'll go to West City Manager.
Just thank you, Mayor and City Council. I think it was a big night. Approving the, both the fire stations is a huge progress for our community. And then finally, Sunday is the Pink Army 5K. So come out, wear your pink, and support breast cancer awareness. Thank you.
Do a adjourn?
Yes.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.